Good evening. This is regular meeting. This meeting is being held virtually in the 11th of September. As the district, we dedicate all our efforts and resources to our work on education for all. We use the fiscal power of deliberations, decisions, and actions. Who gets to see our deliberations, decisions, and actions of the board in open session? We get attention of some items which may be discussed in closed session as given by the discussion five to one coming in. These items typically deal with personnel matters, consultation with our attorney, and what else to say. Our representatives are our Chair, Herrick Bontic, Don Matthews, Alan Derek, Amy Judman, Jeremy Ross, and Amy Kipman. We must do a forum and make contact with them on behalf of this district. Before moving on to the job, I want to remind you that the board will accept all the citizens of the district and from districts that we want. Anyone who just do it either as an individual or as representative of a group, they do so during a janitorial meeting, audience for guests. The board addresses the job and number three for their instructions. At this point, we're at I don't know if two district announcements and two way superintendent before.
Yes, good evening. Thank you so much. I want to walk the board through, you know, what's happened over the course of the last week, week and a half, and why there's been so much, what I call chaos amongst public districts. Again, just, and I'm gonna say seven, eight, nine days. First of all, the governor put out an order allowing health officials to make decisions regarding school closure. In that process, then you started to see various counties making decisions, blanket decisions to close school districts for a length of time. There were sixteen different counties that made those decisions, ranging from anywhere from Dallas County being at September eighth to Tarrant County being October fifth to Harris, Montgomery County being October, I believe it was, whatever date that was, and all in between. Then, the Dan Patrick, not Dan Patrick, excuse me, I'm not there yet, so, um, he didn't pass him, sent out an opinion letter to Steven Mayer, and in that letter, he stated that there could not be a blanket closure on a CDC or health official in a county. That was an opinion letter to Stevensville Mayor, okay? And they don't have a closure in Stevensville. That was very interesting. That and Rapid, that was around one o'clock on, um, July twenty-eighth, what was last day, July twenty-eighth. Within a several hours, the commissioners called, and at that point, in that three o'clock call, the commissioner made it very clear that if, since that is illegal closure, that you must start school traditional or remote. And if you don't, there is zero funding for schools. He said this verbally. The next day, we met with several superintendents. I was one of those to have the conversation of, are we in an order? Are we not in an order? Illegal? Is it legal? We need further guidance before we can move this work forward, before any district starts taking further decisions. Good news by the day meeting, so that would have been July thirtieth, the commissioner made it very clear that you can now go remote for up to four weeks without board approval, and you will receive funding. You can go additional four weeks with board approval, eight weeks remotely with funding. So then we're all back on the page, running full steam ahead, is okay, so now we're getting funded, funding. The AG letter is saying that it is invalid, which he doesn't have that authority, by the way, so I want to be very clear, he didn't have that authority, but that's the way he ran with it at the state, on the state level, PEA level. Since then, there's been lots of confusion on who gets to do what, when, how, and where. PEA at the point has still not given us any guidance or what are steps other than you need to open your door. On Friday, this last Friday, then you have the governor, you have Howard Patrick, Lieutenant Governor, you've got Do Hurst, you've got Chairman, etc., sending out a letter stating that no, that the health advisory cannot make a order, therefore you can start going back to school. This year, we've had a number of Dallas meetings, had one yesterday. Superintendents had Judge Jenkins, had DA, had a number of people on it, and there's still major confusion about what we can and can't do. So are we allowed now to allow our athletes to have strength and conditioning? Even though there's not an order, but there is an order, but there's too much confusion there, and we were told very clearly, yes, we cannot practice, even though many are. This is causing major issue for one and four. So UIL put out a new schedule for five and six A, which starts September seventeenth, but one A through four A are on schedule, meaning less last Monday, August third, they were supposed to start practicing. That puts Ranch View, for an example, at a big disadvantage. We're having some conversations on what can we do, what can't we do. There are several schools in Tarrant County that are still under the illegal order, but they're going ahead and allowing their kids to strengthen, strengthen conditioning training, doing their start of their two-a-days, etc. So as we started to roll out that new plan for athletics to start, strength and conditioning, and after yesterday's meeting, several of the superintendents on that call thought we weren't gonna allow that to happen come Monday, and that we needed further clarification. Now, we've got meetings all day tomorrow, figuring out who's responsible, are we going to get sanctions against us? Why is one group on a calendar saying one thing, saying another thing? When can we all be on the same page so that we can move this work forward? Very confusing over the last, again, nine, seven to nine days, but it's not district, it's what we're getting, and you've seen it on the news, what we're getting from the various entities at the state level. Bottom line, the Board of Trustees on January twenty twenty approved a calendar, and that start date was August seventeenth. We're not changing that date, so that date still stands as is. We are now able to go remote, we're gonna continue to stay remote until September fourth, that's Friday the fourth, Monday is a holiday, Tuesday will come back and allow our children to go traditional or remote. So even though there was an order, legal order, whatever, we're still gonna stay on that track. We're already for our families that, and it's good practice. You know, I'm not, I'm not a medical doctor, but Dr. Wong is a medical doctor. Talking to him directly, what is that type of, is that we move forward, and what does that look like in the future? So, so, we're not changing our plans. We don't plan to change our plans, we're gonna continue to move forward. Now, we still need further guidance from PEA, and the answer is yes. What this CDC and PEA are saying, they do not match, and we made that very clear in the meeting yesterday. So they're working right now to make sure that we can have some solid language where we're all on the same page as we move this work forward. We're also gonna be looking at, you know, what are our next steps for after Labor Day? If you look at the track of what is happening with COVID, if you take Easter, if you take Memorial, or if you look at the spikes after the celebrations, is that gonna happen for Labor Day? Hence, some counties decided to go September, oh, excuse me, October fifth, October nineteenth, to get through the potential next wave. However, hearing that that may not be the case, and so, we're just gonna be honestly having meetings all day long, and I don't know what to believe. And so, we're, but we wanna stay true to the people that we represent, on CFP, stay on the track that we have, provide remote learning, provide remote traditional, our targets September eighth, and then we will see what happens from there. We will continue to communicate in with CDC at the county level, get Dr. Wong's advice on how we move this work forward. But, I want to say, be very clear, that we can, without board approval, go one additional week, one additional week remotely, and then we need to have board approval. So if we get into a pickle, then we're gonna have to come to the board, and if I say we need four more weeks, I can't make that decision. You as a board won't have to make that decision, therefore we'll have to have a special call for what we're getting. But it only hasn't mattered, we don't know what next steps are and how we move that work forward. I want to give a big shout out to our, our team for all the work that they're doing, answering the FAQs, putting out videos. We now have twenty-five videos walking through English and Spanish for our people, and we continue to answer those every single day. And so, I, you know, I can't thank them enough for that process. I would say, you know, as we're learning more information about what does remote look like, what does traditional look like, they've just spent so much time and energy to, to go one way, and then they're so flexible, move backwards, move backwards, as we move forward. And I want to thank the board for all the support you've provided, the way of hotspots and devices, we're gonna be hitting those out next week, so August tenth to fourteenth, starting to bring those devices out. We had over two hundred of our employees calling our children, we've now reached over twenty-three thousand one hundred children to see what they're doing, they go on remote and traditional, and how we can continue to move that work forward. As we get, as we come in, we have a theme, and so Ms. Parnell puts a theme together for the week, and then we start to look at, we need to have more videos here. We've got a lot of stuff in writing, and that's great, but I don't know about you, if I see a three-page document, I'll say I'll read it tomorrow, and a week later, I'll go and practice. But, a video is so much better. If you look at it, it's a two to three minute video, I can watch it, they explain everything to you, it's in English, it's in Spanish, I wanted everybody to communicate with our new video. And then Ms. Parnell sent out a, well, she sent me an text, saying that we've had over two-hundred-and-fifty percent more hits on our website this last week than we have in prior years. What a great, she's gonna talk about our new website, and we're gonna add much more, but boy, does it look good, it's sharp, it's a good representation of what we're trying to do in the CFP. But you have any questions for me before we move to them? Next to you. No, no, UIL's given full authority to allow strength and conditioning to start. So, here's the problem. So, and I agree with this piece, you cannot blanket the entire state of Texas and say that this is the way you're gonna do it. There are some counties that don't have any cases of COVID, zero. And so, UIL was looking at that to go, let's look at all one A to four As as an example of, you know, how many of those four As? Because one through three, there are three As in the metropolitan areas. There are, there's only five in the DFW area, we just found one couple. So they, they said, let's go ahead and continue the schedule as is, because again, it's just a minor, minor amount of people that are in that process. UIL saying, yes, go for it, do it. Now, some people are called, or sent me emails, said, well, what about Argyle and Hunter? They're doing it, they are doing it, but in counties under a recommendation from CDC, not an order. And so, again, do I firmly believe that we could still move forward with the order? Because now we've heard from the governor himself, we've heard from PEA, yet I don't want to take that chance. I want further clarification, and so we're asking for more clarification before we make any, any more steps to move forward. So, uh, we're, again, we're hoping we have that clarification tomorrow. That affects the number, but it also affects some districts like Creedview, or some campuses like Creedview, they need to strengthen conditioning as well right now. My figure is, so, we've been in strength and conditioning, UIL football, I was gonna pick on football right now, strength and conditioning for eight weeks. Ranch View, for an example, has to get five of those last eight weeks. And so, at what point is it gonna be too unsafe for our children to be on the field of, they were competing with teams that have now been practicing, conditioning for, for eight weeks? That's a hard conversation we're gonna have to make, and that's what we were talking about yesterday. If these teams are all doing it, and the teams that I know all over the state, they are, yeah, it's get the beat. And so, we have, and the reason we have it, again, the reason we have it, because we were under an order, not a recommendation. So, they, but, what also came up, well, Creedview's in Denny County, I did, well, campuses in Denny County, well, I'm not, I'm not doing that, we're not going there, we're doing this at twenty-four of our campuses, and Dallas County, therefore, we were sticking with the Dallas County order at that. Why should there be one? Absolutely does. But we're working on that, as we speak, and as I say, we've made it very clear that we need guidance as we move forward, and we hope to get that guidance tomorrow, we hope. It's not Saturday, but we're pushing it. All right, this time, Mr. Marsh is gonna talk about food service.
The Department of Health Services, Dr. Catherine, about an update regarding vaccinations and meal services. You know, since March, we've had so many, many opportunities, never envisioned how many opportunities that could be presented in Texas. One of the current opportunities is vaccination. This year so far, PEA average wellness rate is down sixty-two percent, which that correlates with immunization. We've got a gap, we've got a problem. So analyzing the situation, we've got to work on the long-term effect. So the short-term strategy in this situation is, you saw him came in, Director of Health Services, Sandra Lee, has been collaborating with CDC and the Health Department, developed a short-term strategy. The short-term strategy is immunization plan, and it will be conducted on September the second, before seven p.m., or at the Texas Room at the EFC. We're hoping that we will get a pretty good outcome. And the objective is to provide many opportunities and opportunities for our parents to participate. So now, if we look at the long-term strategy, the long-term strategy consists of, this week, got the Health Department, and collaborated with them to give us a long recording of vaccinations killer, EFC. So, she's fine, got her proof, and the horse is in the house, the equipment, we did get that equipment, we have that in our office. So now, they'll come out the week of August the seventeenth, and they will be required to inspection, which we're confident will pass. Then once we pass that inspection, they will begin to allow us to wear vaccination. With they have that supplies, the nurses are currently being trained. So, like I said earlier, the effect is that I create opportunities access and convenience for our parents. So, what they will do then, the parents can then, they'll go in a form, and it would be nurse at their parent's home, and then Sandra Lee will be taking the vaccination to the parent, and the nurse will be having immunization. So that's a strategy on immunization, very fortunate, adds off to this late thirteen, who are very diligent, doing whatever's possible when it's challenging town. Like I said earlier, with all these opportunities to help our kids. The next item I have is on meal service. The meal service starts on August seventeen, will be serving about four meals, two directions, and two lines, I think, before the seventh, Monday for Tuesday, eighteen. They will start on regular remote learner meal service, which will be ten meals, it'll be five breakfasts and five lunch, they'll have their meal, and they will, I said, pick that up on the three-seater time clock, and we'll do that through about a year, very remote learn. So on September the nineteenth, they were going to transition into meal service on campus. It was very challenging, we looked at variables, and said, well, we got different numbers, different enrollment, different camps, the facilities are different. So those, uh, offers of opportunities, that's the whole message of the team to have these opportunities. So, Director of School Leadership Services, for sure, Sharon, they got together, thought food is, so what can we do to address this opportunity? And they came up with three options. So the three options will provide each principal, okay? Here's what we can do within, within our system, for child nutrition, provide meals for students. So each principal has the opportunity, they did select on which service would be best for their campus based upon the strengths that they've discovered, the enrollment of students, and the facilities. And those consist of the traditional meal service, where these people come through the line, obviously, all the CDC guidance, guidelines, that's been employed. So, that is one of the options. The other option is, if they're having girls, they will then come to the cafeteria, get a meal, and then they will go to a location designated by that principal, which is optimal for that campus. The third opportunity is if they will have meals served to the classroom. Like I said, each principal has, has an option to evaluate which is best for their campus and their situation. The last thing I want to say on meal services, as you're aware, we partnered with the A Champion, last year was first year. They provide one dinner and one snack for each day of the week. Last year, we partnered, provided service at seven camps. But this year, we're expanding that by ten more. They will be providing dinner and a snack at seventeen more camps. The reason they were not doing more than seventeen, they said that was their capacity, no more than seventeen. And we are also having an agreement, bright lights, will also be approved. I just want to say, you know, special thanks again to this lady, to myself, to Sharon, the hard work, the dedication they're, they're doing, to continue to provide medical services and nutrition for our kids. That's my opinion.
Any questions? You know what, I want to give one shot at our food service, that over the summer months, they serve over seven-hundred-and-five-thousand hits, both. That is, that's unbelievable, seven-hundred-and-five-thousand children for our partnership.
I'm not really sure those are the primary, you know, but, well, that's what Dallas part.
Yeah, that's a, that's a proper way, you'll, you'll bring that up, Sarah, careful. Any questions?
I have a question for you about the vaccine for children program. Will parents need to make an appointment for a specific time and won't interfere so that the nurses aren't being taken out of their daily increased duties now with the pandemic, or to give a vaccine? Or could these parents come in at any time during the day?
The fallback on that is Miss Lee, she's got it set for her office, so if there's any conflict, she's going to have it in front of her office, or she will go.
Okay, perfect, so we're not expecting the nurses to kind of shift from the A school focus, so worry about that.
And we've talked about, we have to come after hours, and the nurse is very willing to stay at, make sure.
I think it's a great service and opportunity for the children that need it, sure. I just know that I think the fall is going to increase responsibility on the nurses, making sure that we're not adding that to the whole thing out of order. Thank you for the information.
And this time, Dr. West, she's the people, partying often, and act the bell.
That's Steve, Dr. Catherine, colleagues, community. And before I speak to any group at school, so I always like to revisit our motto, and one of the things that I noticed today about our business, is that it says, CFPI is people being exceptional learning community, where all graduates impact and excel in a complex, interconnected, and ever-changing world. And I thought, wow, did y'all know, when you were coming up with that business, what kind of ever-changing world we could have just in a few short months? It is my honor, though, to speak with you about what we've put together for traditional, remote, and I call those with a capital P, our capital P, traditional, a capital R, remote, and then our little r, remote. And I will explain to you what our little r, remote means. In the, what is traditional? We really focused on that, that we would have our students come back, we decided, safe, we have masks, we will have hand washing, social distancing, all of those kinds of things, and, and we planned for that. A big area of my responsibility was about the, and all of our teams that I work with, was about the remote learning. And when we originally started, we thought that those were the choices that parents would have, traditional or remote, and then as you chose remote, we knew that it was going to be different than what it was last year with our at-home learning. At-home learning was a crisis response to the learning, and when people chose remote, they would want to obviously choose something better. I want to make sure to stop here, though, and say, I don't want to undermine the amount of work and effort that y'all put into putting together at-home learning, we all did our best in a crisis situation, and people weren't hard. But we knew that the rules have changed, and that as part of remote learning, what we're expecting of us now is that we would not have, that we would have the attendance requirements, just like we all used to have, students, that they're supposed to be, even if it's remote, logging in every day. Attendance is an expectation, whereas at-home learning, we were looking for kids who are present. And at home, we also, you probably remember me talking to you about this, about grading, and about our focusing on that we're gonna hurt, not help, and we're gonna give feedback, and all of that conversation. Well, with what we're going, with what is expected of remote learning, it is a regular grading policy, so even though it's choose remote, the, the regular grading policy is the same. And then, as you know, and to be experienced with your own children, we had some platform issues, because when we went into that crisis, though, at home learning, we were just looking for whatever we had and what teachers knew, and so we get teachers using CSO, or Google, or Canvas, and, and sometimes kids were having to log into several different platforms during the day because whoever their teacher was, whatever platform was being used. So we knew that that was a definite need to fix. That's the capital R. We were planning for this whole day, looking at the schedule, how that would work, and making sure that we had all of those pieces in place. Now, with, the reason for the little R, and let me explain that. We then didn't know that we would be starting school remotely, which means, once again, we, we have our teachers coming off summer break, and we knew, and we were going to do this anyway, and I talked to you about that before, we're optimizing outcomes, so we had already planned to optimize the outcome virtually, and then we were going to really dive into what, how you teach remotely and work on that, so we really didn't think that everybody would have to start home that way immediately. So with the little R, the focus is, again, is going to be on all those good things that I've said, that attendance is important every single day, that we're, we're gonna have kids logging in, and we're gonna be checking on their knowledge, that our grading policies are. Find the outcome, that's been the huge focus of teachers, that they're really learning how to use our learning assistant, which is Canvas. And, and I talked into several of the, the virtual training sessions, and kept listening to them, and it's been really interesting to hear teachers talk about our curriculum, and like one of them, I was in a first grade meeting, and they were talking about essential lessons for every return, and the essential kinds of things that kids are wanting to need, this was in math particularly, but about how do you change your meeting or your classroom, whether you're teaching, or you're... That was the other thing I had. But in our remote learning, we definitely are going to focus on, Dr. Chapman already said it, it has to be for people who are all ready to hand out that technology and make sure our students, we've done a great job of mine, also get people to enroll, but also doing well with kids. To make sure that we're getting kids. Canvas, technology, all of those kinds of things. And optimizing outcomes, as I was watching that, we're still trying to figure out a lot of times how to do technology. And our teachers were, and they were modeling in technology to teach the teachers about how to do things. They would run into a few pickups, but wait, let me share my screen. Wait, you not hear the sound? Hang on a second. So there's going to, there's going to be some of that learning curve. And so that will, that's why I keep calling it the little R. We're definitely going to focus on academics. Have our mindset right away. But we'll still be lots of great diversity as well, trying to figure out how to get first graders and pre-payers on technology and meet their teacher. The, I guess the last thing I would say is I wanted, I did want to share the numbers with you because, because we have looked and seen as our students are coming back, what is it that we're preparing for? And it's been surprising to me is that out of our people that have enrolled so far, twenty-three thousand one hundred and eighty-two, thirteen thousand and four have chosen remote learning. And eight thousand six hundred and eleven have chosen traditional onsite learning. So we really did have a lot of people that have chosen to start off remote anyway. So we need to do it well, and we will. But man, this has been definitely, I feel like we're looking up to our vision of preparing people for a never-changing world. Thank you.
Approved. Thank you.
Oh, yeah. Right. And then, and in all of this, we really worked at opening up and figuring out how to open up our, not only after the bell, where the CDA and our development department for our teachers. So that they have a place to. Started September eighth. And they spent a lot of time reaching out to the campuses, make sure the spaces are going to be good. I even talked to you again yesterday on the phone and talked about that the weather is going to be nice and we need to be outside as much as possible. And we need to make sure that as we look at spaces for kids, that the rooms are the two that we're able to social distance. Most of the time, it's down the left, so they're getting cafeteria, they're big, our big spaces. And everybody apart from each other. Do the best we can to have open, inviting, and wonderful collaboration. Perfect to be part.
Is the remote learning.
Good, I know. And we're also all using user cabinets very much. We are, we're going to do a blended book. What we heard loud and clear from our parents as they experience the at-home learning is that they do want a synchronous app that's good at work that we do. And so that's what we're really focusing on with our teacher system. And synchronous means that you log in your lives, teachers' lives, you can talk to the students. And so that is the next expectation for our staff every single day. Because they will be logging in. And honest, careful, first synchronous, so that students can talk to their teachers. And then also, there's an expectation for those learning, that the teacher makes appointments with small groups or individuals. We also do synchronous kinds of tutoring, small group work, those kinds of things. Very important and a good way to learn. But there's also that asynchronous peaks of the day because we also need our students to watch a video or to interact with a game or do different things that we'll put in Canvas. And that doesn't require that they're on camera and the teacher is right there. We also have those kinds of.
I have a few questions about Canvas. So that will be the ultimate. Up on the screen. I mean, don't want to be far. The well, almost wants to know.
Right, right. No, we do have people. But the thing is, the thing that Canvas is the learning management system. And so then you go there. Going into Google Classroom, but they'll go from Canvas to those things. So that way you don't have to go five all. Wait, the CSO will still be used.
And then the other question, or question, I heard that Canvas tracks students' usage through the day. So you can tell if they're active or not, right?
Yeah. And that was part of it. We need to, we want to, we need to be thoughtful about, about making sure that we're talking to parents and talking to students about the amount of time they're getting in their class. Because learning takes time. And if you're going to, if you're going to learn something, you're going to love it.
I think most importantly, for those kids that aren't showing engagement, you can identify that and reach out and find out what's going on. But that was one of the things that we weren't able to engage with. And just offer people a lot to recognize that early on. And then we've got kids that are out there.
And also the fact that we're going to be having a class and looking to, so that's going to be better important to actually factor. But that's one of the ways that we can, that we can take it and say that we get engagement. We have expectations not only about the cameras or the lives. We also have that expectation about engaging with cameras. Things that differ. And we also have that expectation that we still have phones and we still we know and those types of things. We check on people.
I have a question on the remote. So on, so targeting parents, right?
Yes, that was another important piece that we knew is that we needed to be able to help our parents. And also it's going to be good for parents to know how they can. Yes, we are, and that's what we're doing. We can't, Canvas has videos, but when I looked at those videos, I said, that's not, I don't, I mean, that was one of my first emails to them, that these won't work. You gotta make CFP videos so they are right, right in the middle of making them properly.
I have one more question for you. I'm just thinking about, talking about food services being up to the principal. The synchronous or my, yes, remote and traditional learning at the campus, if a student is choosing one or the other, is every campus going to look a little bit different in how they're choosing for the remote teacher versus the in-person? Or is the district?
We are. Because we really, it really would be best practice, and that's exactly what we want to strive for, is making sure that our traditional, our traditional and our other teachers are remote. But as I share with you, with our numbers right now, it's sixty-fourty. And with a lot of still probably people wanting to see how this works. And people can change too. So, so we were working with schedules that were different like that, but they're changing. They want to be able to do that. So we might start off with people that are teaching remote. And as more, as more children come back, and maybe we can do a sort of teaching. It's going to be very, you're thinking about what.
Are we giving a setting across the board that covers districts for what is looking for only every principal type of expression that makes an act deeper ability to do that both for?
Well, we, we are working for, and that's part of what was the capital R. Is we were having teachers actually, a part of your remote teacher, and because we wanted to be certain to teachers that. We, because that's, that, we don't, we are leaking it to the discretion of the principal in the following ways.
Yes. Okay, so I understand there might be blocks. Uh, threshold, threshold, or as in only traditional or not remote?
No, it's going to be for, it's going to be for both. But that, and part of that conversation was about just back to the traditional. Here are changes during the day of class. And it's an A, it's a A to A. I told, you know, the secondary. Okay, never mind, Casey, still has hope. Oh, that's right.
So on the traditional, looking at the left side of the question. I'm talking about such a, it became a classroom that allows. And of course, I understand you have no idea what happens if you don't hold the tablet and. But do we have this whole threshold in our classroom? What is a trigger to like, this is a problem. If that can be checked, you know, the first week, that's where, let's just, the first week, go back and forward. I guess my concern is it did say that we need to be additional education. This is a big problem.
Let's, let me answer the first part of that question. And I'm totally going to cry. So they got the rest of it. I've been working on this threshold on the remote. But I will say that one of the things that we have talked to our principal about, without that offhand, we talked personally about all of this stuff, is, is a lot of times in classrooms, teachers really fill it up, like they put a lot of things in there because it's, it's, it looks, it's fun. And we really have tried to say, okay, we've got to be minimal here. And we've got to really think about what's in the room. And the fact that we really need more space for kids to get a part at a place that has a lot of, a lot of things in the class. So I do know that we've done that. We wanted to put in structural things in the classroom, but you got to, you also got to pay.
Yes, that is a concern. That's something we've been very focused on. The driver on that is in a common side of all. So yes, that's what we've been trying to evaluate. There are many complexities. One thing that we have ordered of trapezoid, polycarbonate dividers, that each student will have one of. When there's times, we're maybe in five, then we'll have a physical barrier. I don't, if you want me to go into talking about any of that, I'll chat. Yeah, okay. So we have the trapezoid, polycarbonate desk barriers, and each student will have one. And they will take that with a different pathway at home, but in every class, class, they'll take that through. But like you said, to get back to your question, that is a concern, that's something to evaluate. And we'll have to look at it, we've had discussions, and well, not all five of them are the same size. So some teachers are very abusive and comfortable with classroom. They might have good pleasure. So that's, that's some of the factors we're looking at.
And a lot of our facilities, oh, not all, but we have capacity. We're going to do that.
Yes.
And if we've got a classroom, like you said, find a good, maybe find a good classroom, whatever we need to do. I guess I just want to make sure that that's one of my check boxes, that first week, we're talking to school.
Yes, most definitely, it's a priority. Like I've discovered, and I go back to order the opportunity. And it's just provided another opportunity, like I said, it's been amazing. How innovative our people have been at the end. It's really been, it's given us back to an opportunity to develop the things that we do. And this is really stretching people, it's pushing people. And it's actually been a result of some very innovative, better ways of going to that.
Do parents assume that conscious sizes roster will be smaller than before?
The driver on that is one of the crassier ways.
First, they need to consider it.
Yes.
So the number four. I'm on the practice, like I already said, every child has been burned on one at all.
That's correct.
Never mind. I just want to add this to this, because all of this work, and like Dr. Chapman said, you've been back and forth, back and forth all summer. It does, we go one direction planning really, and we think we're doing a great job of making that. If we're not going that way, we have to go a whole different way. And this is the favorite people that I work with. One of them is in here right now, and the chief. And all of their work on these plans and leading so many different groups across our whole school district together. They've done excellent work, and they have all spent hours, hours, having so many conversations about all these things. We've talked to that question about, are the kids in the room, what about the remote? How will we do that? And it's been hours.
One more question from the March about, and students, their protection. Are we providing any type of base shield for children? Not the mask necessarily, but the shield?
We are not providing shields. This study, the CDA did not provide that in July. If that was something that's desired, good order though, that's not current.
We did get a mask.
Yes. We have a disposable mask per school, reusable mask per school.
Great, thank you. Thank you.
And if you have any further questions, all that can be talked about is on our website. Find information, pump out additional information. That being said, our main objective to talk about, our website, our new website.
Thank you, Dr. Chapman, the meeting with President Con, Trustee, and Dr. Chapman, the team, they launched our new website this past Friday. And we spent about ten hundred and forty dollars on the project, and I rated two thousand pages for a content. So it was a big project, and I want to thank our team that works so well to finance the project. The project manager was Asher Plante, she's the speaker tonight. And if you guys have heard of my hard work, Amy Johnson, our graphic designer, as well as the technology team, made us a phenomenal job managing this project in the position. So just a few high points to share with you, since the launch, we have new successes. Average load per page has decreased by half the time.
Average load time per page has decreased by half the time. So whereas before we averaged almost six seconds per page, now we're at three seconds. So you're seeing your information that's one quickly than previously did. Uh, as Dr. Chapman mentioned, uh, user physics increased by 105% on launch day. And then this week we're averaging about 2,000 users per day. Previously, we only averaged about 45 users. So those are some tremendous successes so far. We know there's work still to be done. Uh, we have a trade in tomorrow for our Candace webmasters and so we will be working the guns and getting their patients up and going. And so it is an ongoing project. Please, what's happened so far in the first week for the hard work we've taken on the project.
Thank you for doing this.
Okay. Let's say, let's, let's talk through for a minute what we're doing now. We're holding the classroom or holding the classroom possible, but we are putting the burden on the campus at some point. So we had 38 campuses, we have district sites before everything was coming into really one person. So now, as you're saying, they're going to start training those campuses and the campuses. Persons are going to be able to edit, update their own campus site. So where we may take, it might be forever to get something on a website or a campus site, they can now do it immediately. So as you see on social media with Twitter and Facebook and those other platforms. If you've been following some of our campuses, we are constantly sending out lots and lots of information. We have for well over a year now. Well, now they can take that and put that information Facebook as well. We don't have to rely on one person to look at it, then go put it on a site where you have 38. Come on land, they can count. I will be able to do it still, but I want to give a huge shout out to Asher. He does done an exceptional job taking all of that information and moving that really was. Actually, I mean, I should say, and so, you know, the time she's done, it's been your help. The hard work and long hours that she's done and she's efficiently worked and edited the time she thinks she has to do. But it's still, it's still continuing. So thank you so much for all that.
I'm sure, I'm sure someone. Or what do you want, a very honest reporter of some of the individual campuses. But I'm asking you one question, but I'll keep it up. Big talk. This campus has a good. Somebody will be making sure everybody is keeping on.
Thank you for that. I am happy to be here.
Yeah. So even during the pandemic, our council P T A is still going to work. And, uh, just to update for those by year review, the new board has been elected and Craig is the council P T A president. Uh, on their behalf, I'd like to report the following. This is we've been hosting trains for local P T A officers this year. Assisting local P T As with elections and financial, uh, donations. Also, we are working closely with the communications department to create a video that will help spread the word about joining P T A. Each council board member has been a. School P T A. They will assist with training, communications membership. Also, each advisor will be valuable resource for principals as well as P T As. So, uh, also we are encouraging you to join our council P T A Facebook page. Uh, empty group, uh, Facebook groups are also available for P T A treasurers, membership chairs and collection chairs. All of our local P T As have been working hard creating creative ways to recruit membership this year. Uh, they encourage us to join P T A, uh, at W W W dot join P T A dot board. And to make sure that P T As are all registered. So the goal this year is to have every professional C F B employee and school board members to join and help promote M P T A and C F B. But their kids are really hardworking. I'm so thankful that we have our advocate on our house.
Thank you, Ms. Prendergast, for this report. The next item is item two C, recent special representative's high staff regarding the posted agenda items. For the regular board meeting scheduled for tonight, board members, if you have any questions regarding the presented tonight. Mr. Chapman.
Uh, a couple of questions, probably just first about, I have, I have four revenue, it's insurance. Just a couple of questions and, and don't they will be told, so. Pretty lively, calm on the working. Okay. Okay. Um, the, the couple of questions that I had about that, I noticed that we got a pretty serious bump. A lot of insurance throughout the area did from a premium standpoint, not just us. But the change that we have from $500,000 deductible to 1%, I'm just curious. How many properties do we have that have that potential liability? It can be a pretty steep jump when you go from the fixed dollar amount on executive to the other. And, and if you don't have those numbers, it's probably that they seem enough to realize, you know, what is that. But, you know, we're trying to assess how much potential liability we've got.
Well, so sir, that's mine.
Okay.
The, 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 okay. So I'm going to have to ask very quick that question. Very, very well. I know Steve Blasey here and it was, well, he's, he's not mine, but I don't know if that's. So we'll probably have to send that back to you. But the painless to stay, I mean, what we're. You know, everybody brought the fear. One thing is we're, we're trying to decrease our exposure is to, we need to reset our debt for putting some of our reserve funds into a run. So that we can have that shot again. If we do have. So anyway, so what is this?
Mr. Blasey. Uh, item, uh, four, C, C N A R, or that. Our memo from earlier in the summer and then, uh, initial of this. Some of these, I have a list of the items that were on here. There were different comments. Different, um, organization. So the item three, the boy lack long, middle school, uh, this is my. The list of, for renovation.
Listen, they like to know we're part of the creation of our picture. And so it's, it's not, it's not important.
Okay. All right. So I, when, when you meet an eye, would like people with this eye that after our special.
Mr. Monroe. I'd like to follow item four, C.
And I was just curious, this, this means the Dallas college, um. You know, uh, most, most, uh, that's what I think is on these.
Yeah, we're, we're still waiting to find out that's what that support level looks like. But we will still have four, as we're paying, even if they go the road.
For the early college?
For every college.
And, um, four M is actually the dual credit part, Dallas college and that lost. Any other questions? So what I have is we're speaking for the local school. Thank you. Um, our next item is item three, audience for guests. Board members that comment from this, this district, this district point. Anyone wishing to speak here as an individual or as a group, they do so during the time. Before we move to now or not, our audience members. Each speaker will be allowed to address the board by speaking for an maximum of three minutes. The comments portion of the meeting will be no more than 30 minutes total, dictated by board policy, P T A U N O. During that time, the board is liable to hear from everyone who wanted opportunities to fully invite them to the next regular scheduled meeting. For requests to speak, we have to be followed these instructions. Please press the raise your hand button on your phone or iPad or computer. Mr. Monroe, and I will call your names in order. To do this, first make sure that the participant window is open by clicking on the participant icon to the bottom of your screen. Then press the hand symbol in the lower right corner. If you're using a mobile device such as an iPhone, the participant button should be in the upper right portion of the screen. After opening that, the raise your hand button will be at the bottom of the screen. Everybody following all this? I'm not, but I'm sure so will it. Because the board wants to hear from as many of you as possible while also keeping the meeting ready officially. Maybe group, but I think hopefully you don't have to go through that challenge. But if you speak during audience for guests, if you're, if you're on the platform, if you're in the support, you have to deliberate. On any subject that is not included on the event for the meeting, lastly, ask if you not discuss students or not. Mr. Monroe, do we have anyone interested in addressing? So I understand we have one potential person and Gabriella Gonzalez. Finally, I love Mr. Monroe.
Keep from an echo, I need to.
Hello, my name's Gabriella Gonzalez. I'm a substitute teacher with C F B and a master's of education student at U N T. Before I launch into my question, I would like to say that the audio from the building is giving so much feedback from the acoustics of the room. And I've seen comments from parents on Twitter saying that this meeting is a little inaccessible due to the audio. Um, how, my main question is, is that, um, I've been seeing reports from other school districts that staff is allowed to wear scrubs at work. And when I first heard this news.
So I'm. There's a, could you please start? We now have you on speaker.
Okay. So I first mentioned that the acoustics of the room is a little echoey and a couple, I've seen parents from Twitter saying that this meeting is a little inaccessible. And I've been having a lot of trouble hearing a lot of the board members' comments as well. Um, but I, my main question is, I've been seeing reports from other districts saying that staff are allowed to wear scrubs to work. Um, I've spoken with this, with friends that are nursing. They say it's a really effective way to wash your clothes after, um, returning home from work. And I would like to know if that's a possibility. Also, I had to complete a technology check for, um, teaching virtually for the first couple of weeks. And if the technology is inaccessible for the board meeting, um, I don't know what to say. I, I want to provide the best education that I can as a substitute, considering that more teachers are going to be out. And I, I want these meetings to be a little more accessible audio wise.
Thank you, Ms. Gonzalez. Can you hear your comment on the comment? Um, I think if Mr. Monroe has your contact information. We're doing that what we need for that call and comment record.
Contact information?
Um, it's something that we only collect on paper, but I think we're good if we're on the website.
I, I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
I think we're good. Thank you for commenting. I appreciate your comments and because it's not a posted item, we can't discuss that specifically. But we appreciate. I hope you can hear me.
Um, I was not able to hear much of what you said. Um, I've been hearing reports from other people that are watching this online that nobody can hear what's being said in this meeting.
Okay. We will improve. At this time, we will proceed to our next agenda item, number four, consent agenda. The consent agenda is a mechanism that the board uses. The coincidence of all consent agenda items in the board has been provided ample information on these items in advance. Far from any action taken on the consent agenda, board members may request withdrawal of individual items for clarification or discussion. Board members, are there any items to be removed from the consent agenda at this time? I currently have four C and four D to be removed. I don't see any others to be removed. So is there a motion on the remaining consent agenda item? Mr. Chapman.
This client, I would move that we approve the consent agenda with the exception of removing items four C and four D and approve the consent agenda at this point.
Thank you. We have a motion by Mr. Chapman, as seconded by Ms. Blasey. Is there any discussion? Any more questions? All those in favor? And if six in favor and any opposed? There are none opposed. Our next item is the budget update. Mr. Bassett. I call this meeting the girlfriend's great for. Board of trustees back to order at eight 21 P M. And, um, we're monitoring and trying to make sure that our audience can hear us. Especially for our next item, which is our, um, budget update, our Mr. Bassett. So welcome, Mr. Bassett. Please proceed.
Very much, President Prime, members of the board, I can chat with. Um, so this is the part two of this school discussion that I, that I gave to you. The first part was, uh, early June, I've been shortly arriving. For a couple of weeks. So, uh, nearing the end of my third month with the district in the past period. So there's a lot of ground to cover. Uh, feel free to stop me anytime, ask any question. No, but, uh, don't hesitate. I'll try to make sure I'm speaking into the microphone. Okay. So you saw this slide before and, and the main parts of our revenue, local property taxes, state property. state property taxes, and federal fund. For the state contributions, you're going to see the slide later, it goes up to 51 million, 51.7 million. That's our total state allocation. And so, I'm going to give you the piece parts on how that all adds up. But the main thing I want you to realize, though, is that down there in bold, as a property tax collection increase, the state funding decreases pretty much on dollar per dollar basis. So, this, there's a lot going on with this chart. Not all of it is applicable to the state, but I'll tell you what is. Over on the right, the interest and seeking contributions that have come from the state, we are, we're too property wealthy to qualify for any of that. So, you don't have to worry about that side of the, that side of the slide. But we do have tier one and we do have tier two, with tier two being the golden penny, copper pennies. So, we're going to draw more detail on that here instead. Last time spoke about this, we talked a lot about the basic allotment, which is tier one. And then also spent some time talking to you about the controller property tax division estimates. And that's the CPTV, those are tier one and tier two. The bold items are the new items for this presentation before we get to our regular budget. Okay, so, this is how tier one funding is put together. A lot going on here. If you're over on the, over on the far left column, the first is the regular program. Those are the ADA that we have. We have, uh, expecting 21,740 students basically. You can see using the basic allotment, the tier one revenue, 133.9 million. Below that are all of the special populations that we have. So, special education has a lot of different subpop. I mean, you have hometown, you have mainstream, a lot of different type, specialty students. And so, I could have had just one slide for that, second revenue. I'm putting all these together here. Those weights for those students range from 1.15 all the way to 5,000, 5,000 base allotment for our most secure specialty cases of the year. That shakes out in terms of total tier one revenue. Then you have the other items there for exact state comp beds. State comp bed, you have the increase in the weights for high school three. By Ringo also had an increase. Dyslexia is bringing new with high school three, so that's 1.1%. And then, uh, yeah, early education has a rate, rate of weight of 1.1 as well. That one's new for high school three. I, that was one of the largest teams in high school three, adding that new to the O and T amount. That's, that's pre-K, pre-3. The college career, military readiness, and then there's other allocations that we have there, transportation, the school safety program, those total 1.7. All of that, tier one, is the total cost from a statewide perspective for us. The state looks at it for the allocation in the 21.8 million dollars. That's how that shakes out. All right, so get ready for this. So, equalized wealth levels. So, I'm going to, I'm going to talk to you about what this looked like before high school three, because everybody was here before that time. So, it's difficult to put this before high school three. So, the maximum rate that school districts could have without approval was about 4. That's that one. You have the six golden pennies. And so, those were equalized to the Austin ISD rate. Been that way since 2006. One of the reasons why high school three came along, because as Austin ISDs, their wealth just kept going to improve, school districts were receiving a lot of funding because of that. It was becoming too positive for the state. So, that was one of the things that they really wanted to change. The golden pennies are not set for recapture. Voter approval needed for pennies on that. And it was something that was distributed a couple of years ago. That yield was 106.28. 106.28 what? That's, that's dollars per water. I'm going to show you how that actually gets calculated later and how it applies to that. So, we also had the copper pennies after we had the TRE here. We had a lot of copper pennies. Those were equalized to 31.95 dollars per water. Now, in that case, though, there was recapture above that. So, once, once Grover and Farmers Branch had the TRE, we had the copper pennies, that added to the capture of the 106. So, that's what we had the pennies for. That first dollar of the tax rate, that's the tier one tax rate, and that was, you know, that was compressed back in 2006 from a dollar fifty, down to one dollar. But the, uh, the basic allotment at the time of high school three was $5,140. So, the way the statute looked at it, that the recapture, the recapture of the district that paid it was, that was about that amount, said it's 514,000 per water. Our, our value per water right now, 707,000 per water. So, that's why we are recapturing. That was the new, that was the amount for high school three. So, the golden pennies and the copper pennies, you can see down below that chart, that's the tier two. So, the tier two is the golden pennies and the copper pennies. That first dollar is to support the, uh, the tier one. So, this is how it looks like now after high school three. I showed the three years of tax rate. We have our last one, the last time we were, the dollar seventeen, eighteen, nineteen. We compression in nineteen twenty, we got compressed down from a dollar to 93 pennies on the, on the, on the sum rate. Okay, now, the golden pennies, that amount came down per water, down to 98.6 cents per water. So, Austin State quite a bit, like doing that, even though there are a lot more golden pennies. The basic allotment changed to 61.60 per 93 pennies. And so, that recapture amount, 662, 400 dollars per water, that isn't in statute anymore. That never actually changed, it never really. Okay? It tied to the basic allotment. Now, it's something that changes, it's based on the law per state law. Okay, so, each time you see that in future, it's going to be a different number, necessarily estimated based on what we know about what's going on in state one. The copper pennies, so before, we had a lot of copper pennies. Last year, they got compressed to 5.8 copper pennies. That equalized the amount we come up with. And so, now the recapture amount is based on what that implementation level is. So, see that amount per penny is equalized to 49.28. You see, I'll show you how that calculation actually works. Uh, the recapture amount is that same amount times 100,000. So, we do have recapture on our copper pennies, because our, our value per water is well above that. So, you can see, we do have a little bit of tax rate compression this year, which is before. I'll explain why that is. Basically, we don't have nearly as much property value growth as we had last year. And you can see in the graph how that, how that compares. Okay, so, and this is advanced school finance right here. This one, this slide right here is advanced school finance. Let me try to walk you through it. So, our proposed rate is a dollar five forty seven. That's a proposed rate with the compression, because we have, we do have value growth above the rate of 2.5%. Our value growth is expected to be about 3.1%. So, that's why we do have some compression. So, those collections, that's our tax rate, are in our collections, 245, 25 million dollars. So, what does that mean per penny? Per penny, you can see what we're getting there, 3 million dollars per penny. So, then how much are we collecting on the golden and copper penny? The gold and copper pennies combined there is 13.83 pennies. And so, if you multiply that times the 2.3, we're collecting 32.4 million dollars in EMO collections to, from the golden and copper penny. So, that's where that 32 million dollars comes from. Now, remember, I talked about the CPTV, that's the controller value. That's the value that the controller placing on what they think the property value is for our, for our district as it stands now. Again, that's a number that's set in a point in time. And it's changing every time, every time there's a appraisal challenge. I mean, it's, it's, it's a frequent, right? We do, we do have a number that the state's going to use at this time. It'll be something that'll chew up later. So, that CPTV amount is 23.8 billion. So, that's their estimate for us for the current year. All right, so, the hard part is that, you know, if you split up the gold and copper pennies, to get these district tax rates, what you have to do, you have to do a ratio of the EMO collections for the gold penny over that CPTV. Okay, so, that's just a simple fraction. Multiply times the hundred. And so, our, our VTR for the copper penny is 7.8 cents. Okay, so, that's where you, that's where you do that VTR. For the copper penny is 5.74 cents. So, that's, so those numbers are, so I'm telling you, the numbers are A. So, for the equation down below, that's variable A. Variable B is our water. So, our water is different than our average, our average daily attendance. Our water is based on the weights, all of those weights from all those students that we had before. The higher, the more specialty debt you have, the more bilingual, more competitive, more susceptible, all of those, all of those students that are special above just regular, pure tech, all of those, that increases our water, not necessarily ADA, increases our weighted average ADA. So, our weighted average daily attendance, we're protecting 32,000, 5.1. So, I'm giving that variable B. So, the guaranteed yield from the slide that I, the slide I showed you before, for the copper pennies is $98.56 per water. And for the copper pennies, it's $49.28 per. So, for each of those golden and copper pennies, multiply A times B times C times the hundred. Do that twice, once for the copper pennies, once for the, for the golden penny. That's how you get to the tier two item. That's what the, that's what the state says that we should earn for tier two funding. That doesn't mean that's what we get. That means what we, what we, what we earn. So, I'll get to that part next. Well, here, let me explain this, and then I'll show you where that local share comes in. So, I know, uh, Scott, he started to warn the district, started with the board about the formula transition grant and how that we're potentially facing a funding cliff in the future, based on the old harmless that was put in place after high school approved. I'm going to give you a lot more detail on that. So, the whole point was that each district was supposed to gain something from high school approved. If they hadn't put this, the whole harmless in place, many districts, including 4, including CFB, would have had less money from high school approved. And they, they would not have gotten, been able to get it back, because there were a number of, number of different districts with influential reps that were really surprised when they were told that, hey, our district's going to be funding this or something. That's how this got put in. So, the, the old harmless said that everybody is guaranteed that is a 3% of their ADA prior funding. I'm going to show you how that calculation works. For us, we're expecting that, that grant funding, that FCG, you know, that formula transition grant, uh, to be in excess of 23.6 million, which is more than it was before, it was 21. So, it's getting bigger, which is that much more concerning. So, anyway, I'll show you a graph on that here in a second. And that amount is set to, here, 2024 will be the last year that it happens, unless there's some rumors later. And that'll be something that we're going to need to speak, speak about in our role. So, here's how that works. So, if you look at the 1920 column, if you did the calculation under the old law, our revenue per water would be 10,000. You multiply that times the 103%, okay, you get 10,00979. And so, I'm sticking with the, the 1920 column. So, that revenue per ADA, just from the formula, the new formula for high school, we would have lost money. We would have lost 922 dollars per, well, actually, you should, you should compare the 10, 057 to the 10, 660. And we would have lost money, but you definitely would have to be compared to the 3%, that's 922 dollars per student. So, that's where you multiply times our ADA, the formula transition grant that we're recognizing in 1921, per year, is the 21.6 million. But we're going up 2 million more. The, uh, the high school three per ADA is actually going down this year. It's the way that, that's the way that the formula shakes out. And we're able to stay at that 10,000 times 79. So, that, that formula transition grant total actually goes up 2 million dollars. Okay, so, I mean, it's good that we get that money, because that's the only new money we really have. But again, it does pose problems for the future unless we can have, get some money later. All right, so, here's how all of those numbers tie together to 51.7 million dollars. So, the total one I showed you was 218 million. We don't get any of that, because our local share is, is over 218 million. So, you subtract those and you just, it's going up to zero. We're not going to carry over negative amount. We're just going to carry over zero for the state share of tier one. The next amount is the available, what they do is they take our average daily attendance, there's not a separate slide for this, it's just the average daily attendance at per tax rate. So, in this case, it's about 93.4 million dollars. That is the money that we did get. Then you get that tier two entitlement, showed you that, that number earlier, 34.4 million. What the local share for that is 27.9. So, that is reduced, 34 minus 27 is 5 million, that's the state share. So, then the formula transition grant from the prior slide, 23.6. And so, there's, there's 12,000 that we have to pay for Texas School of the Blind, and for some reason, that's in this room. I don't know why, that's, so if you're wondering why those two numbers are different, it's because of the Texas School of the Blind allocation, 12,000 dollars that we have to pay out of that number. Then the other number you're, I hope you're familiar with, and that's the TIRAS something happened, something that, you know, every year that the state recognizes, you have to recognize that, the state have a volunteer going to the TIRAS fund. So, there you go. Add those together, 21.7 million. So, that's, uh, that's it for, for that. So, the formula transition grant, just to show you a little bit of how that works. So, so there's this graphic here that we, that bottom row there, those are the dollars for the formula under high school three. Those are the dollars for the formula under high school three, that bottom, that bottom black bar, the higher black bar for the FCG. And then the delta there is 23.6 million. That's how much the formula transition grant is for us. So, whatever the variable, if, if ADA goes up, or if the tax rate goes up, or if any of those subpopulations go up, the bottom black bar will go up for any of those. But the only way that the formula transition grant goes up is if we have more ADA. Like we, if you think we are going to have more ADA, that's why we're higher. So, you can see that even if, so this is a different way of thinking, but if we were looking at career and tech, for example, we were wondering, okay, well, surely if we add another career and tech class, we're going to get more state revenue. Well, that used to be the case, but because we're in this, we're, we're in this world right now, at least for the, we won't get more revenue if we add another CPTV. But we still may need to make that investment, okay? And so, but we just have to look at the, the economics difference, what happens. Okay, because the revenue, additional revenue that we get is really on, really only on the basic regular ADA. So, this is something that I don't think people have fought through, whenever the law was put in place. Okay, and so, we're going to use this graphic and some others, especially with regard to spending. A whole other step we thought safer to discuss, uh, because as, as those subhops go up, requirements get higher and higher, and that means you have that much less for regular pay. So, I'll, I'll share with you some outlandish numbers in the future, in future presentations. Okay, so, we're going to shift gears and talk about the exit of the time. Before I do that, does anybody have any questions on the, on the form? Very patient with you, so if there's anything, obviously, happy to take your questions. All right, so we got this the other day from Prince and Passbo. They are looking at it, it's 4.6 million dollars per city. Uh, the revenue declines higher than that, but they have savings from some reduced expenses on a statewide, including the ground spending on, on schools that they're helping with now. But the, uh, the projected deficit for the next five years is likely to break. So, the state sales tax trend, and this was through, you know, so, you know, that last, last June, I showed you a slide where, where the first month was something that declined in the middle, where you can see, though, it was worse in May, and not as bad in June. So, we did just see yesterday or the day before, that actually the July numbers spiked, which was really shocking for a lot of people, that actually went up, year, year 4.3%. So, that's something that can continue, that would be... So that's something that can continue, that would be, maybe. Uh, I don't think they're, surely not projecting that. But, uh, this was something that was published a week before. And so, uh, the July number just came out. And so, anyway, that's, that's good news. So this is how all of those are projected right now. This is from the, uh, briefing that was given by the state comptroller. So the sales tax, they're projecting for twenty twenty-one to be in minus four point three. That is the biggest number in the course, uh, for this, this week, you know, full time. So they're expecting things to get worse, so maybe, hopefully that'll change based on what they saw in the law. You can see some of these other differences. You can see they're expecting natural gas to, to be better, you know, than the, than the current year, but the oil production tax could be worse in terms of losses. Uh, but basically, it's, you know, it's all negative. So it's, it's not a good picture for that. So the, the comptroller, you know, he did say, we have the tools to get through the next by any. You know, like any, any use of rainy day fund to get through the rest of this by any, this next year. I wanted to make things that much more difficult for the next by any. Since difficult decisions like they had, and then, you know, he did say that they're talking about fund balances. So I'm gonna speak a little bit more about fund balances later. Some of the strategies that I think, you know, we, we need to have and implement to, to shelter our fund down. Okay, so I'm gonna change gears. So I'm gonna start talking about, uh, our, our local property. And so, uh, it's, this is the craziest things I've ever seen with the appraisal district. The amount of, the amount of, uh, value that's under appeal is just unprecedented. There's over eight billion under appeal for us. Uh, huge numbers, bigger than, than really they've ever been. So, uh, so that's, it's gonna be interesting to see how that shakes out. You know, what they started with, their values based on January first, well below, well before the pandemic started. And so, you know, what everybody's seeing is based on January first, not based on some of the realities some people are feeling after several months of this shutdown. So it has been a large enough protest. And the estimate that we've been given, and again, so this is a certified estimate, we will get a certified role later. They weren't able to put one together, but by statute, they had to give us something in July, so we put our budget together. Certified estimates, three point one three percent. And so that's a lot less than the eight point five we were talking about in June. And, and that, and that June number was based on what the comptroller, what the appraisal districts were telling us at the end of April. After all this started, they were well moved into it. So significant changes since that time. We are likely to see depressed values for, for the following year, which will be used for the following budget. Uh, but again, for us, really, this mainly impacts debt service. Okay, I mean, our debt service fund, which I'll spend a little bit of time on later. It really doesn't impact the general fund. If, if we had eight point five percent growth, but three point one percent growth, our net amount is gonna be the same, it's just whether or not we're recognizing that money on the local basis or if the state's making up the difference on the state. Okay, so it's really dollar for dollar. So here's a graph on how our property value by a year has gone. So we're expecting property value twenty-four point two million. More importantly, though, look at the percentage change. So this is, I think it's a lot better analysis when you look at it on a percentage change basis. So you can see the three point ones, they change. And we haven't been that low since, uh, twenty twelve, uh, since, you know, we were recovering from that, from that recession. Had a massive growth since that time, so three point one percent.
That's due, that's based on the January value?
Well, it's January values, but it's also, it's also because of all of the, January values were, were, I think, well above eight percent growth year over year. But because of all the, all the protests and everything, and everything that's under appeal right now, this is, this is what, uh, this is a much more lappier number than we talked about the Dallas appraisal district and, and the present district. But of uncertainty, I mean, there's, you know, three point one, is that what the final's gonna be? Doubt it, but that's as good a number to have right now. Last time, we, we did speak about the change in the CPT property values. Again, that's what the state is saying. We had the big increase in that property value in nineteen-one because it's hit, it's fine. Okay, so that's, this is a time big bump that we have because of the tip. So when you compare those two, because we have these two major variables that go into what we have to project for local funding and state funding. And we don't, we're, we're gonna assume that the property value for the, for the comptroller is gonna go up three point one percent. You see, rarely do they have, do they go up the same level. I mean, nineteen-twenty's an aberration because of the tip, that doesn't really count. The clo, the one closest to being exact was seventeen, eighteen, seven point nine and, and seven point eight. So, uh, so anyway, there's just way more uncertainty now that we're in current year values. And government agencies across, you know, across the country, they're using these, these values. And so it is just that much more uncertain when we're putting our budgets together. So here's.
Ask a question?
Yeah, sure.
I'm curious about, when we had the bond election, Dr. Chapman first guy here, he committed to maintaining the same tax rate. And are we tracking as we're promoting and proceeding through the farm, feel the track that we might go to impact the tax rate?
Yeah, we're, slides on debt service here in a little bit. No, no, it's okay, but, uh, you have good news along those lines. So on the, uh, on the MNO tax service rate, tax rate, um, you can see we're, we're gonna be going down about a dollar, uh, not a dollar, a penny, one point four pennies. So, um, so anyway, we'll be going from the one oh six eight to the one oh five four. So you can see where it's gonna make for the value grade. Okay, enrollment is one of our key things. This is the number that we got from the, from the demographer. So if you wanna think about uncertainty, I mean, you know, you should be able to put, you know, have a good idea of what you think enrollment is gonna be. But now with remote learning and everything, I mean, you know, we, we don't know. One thing that, that, the reason why I'm optimistic is that we had hundreds, uh, we've had about two hundred employees that have come on contract to go to their schools and actually call families one by one, asking them how things are going, encouraging them to enroll, seeing what they need, reaching out. Thousands have been made, and they're still being made. And we're getting great feedback from our families that haven't, you know, been contacted like that before, they, like, care, and we do, we do care. And so, but they're, they're hearing that, and so we're, you know, we're gonna pay some supplemental pay to do that, that's gonna be well worth it. But it's that kind of action that we're taking that hopefully will sustain, will sustain our ADA and our enrollment. Okay, so here's just some, some of the kind of miscellaneous notes. First, really important, the state is gonna hold all school district harmless for the first two sweet periods. They know that things are gonna be crazy the first, you know, that, that first third of the year. And so we, we're all gonna be held harmless based on those, on the ADA from before. They've given, they calculated that year. Okay, and so we're, like what we saw, we're using that in our budget. We're, we're optimistic that we're gonna be able to maintain that level. Hopefully, we're gonna be able to exceed it based on a lot of the action. So we'll, we're, uh, we're trying to be optimistic on that, we'll see. But ADA may be in remote learning and other options. We do expect to have lower, lower income on athletic revenue, tuition fees, interest income. Okay, those will all be lowers. But some of that's gonna be made up by some of the things that, that, you know, the CARES Act, we're gonna get a small, we're gonna be able to keep a small amount of that, uh, in the general fund, uh, as a provider relief fund, there's some FEMA funding, coronavirus relief fund. And so we'll give you a report in the future in terms of how much we, we end up collecting for those. Uh, but, uh, hopefully that'll offset some of the losses in athletic revenue. From a expenditure perspective, you know, just like in nineteen-twenty, you know, especially with the, uh, with us starting off from a remote perspective, the lessons won't be running, you know, the utility expenses won't be as high, we don't have substitutes, we'll, uh, you know, the overtime, extra daycare pay, so all of those will be lower. And then there's other one-time costs. And so, uh, Mr. Marish was talking about the desk screen providers, spoke about those earlier, that's gonna be a cost. A lot of signage that's being put up, you know, at, at all of the, at all the schools to help, uh, with, you know, direct kids and a lot of CDC guidance and things like that that are, that are gonna go up. So those are some one-time costs we're gonna be using for. By the way, like the, the, uh, we are gonna have some procurement items for those that are gonna be a specialty that we'll have on the adopted budget. So that's where the procurement for those. Okay. So the compensation is one of the biggest, uh, investments we try to make every year because attracting and retaining our staff is, is district priority. The, the, the big rocks that, that the board has already approved is a two percent salary increase. And you have the increase in stipends and supplemental pay for the, for the scheduling approved, uh, one-time your service supplement, and then the tennis incentive. So all those investments that have been approved by the board already, get just over five and a half million dollars. Now, the other one, though, we spoke about this last year, the, the retention stuff. Because we knew with the raises not being high, and because we knew, raises weren't high because we don't wanna lock ourselves into really high payroll when we, we're looking at the potential of state funding, you know, just the following year. So all school districts were, were much more modest in their increases. We were modest as well with two percent. So because of that, you can think about the concept of the retention stuff. That's a one-time expense, it's not salary, it's not the gift that you're talking about, it's just one time. So the retention is something we're gonna, uh, ask the board to approve on August twentieth. And so again, goals to attract and retain staff. So all of the staff that are TRS eligible, all of our employees, about three hundred and fifty employees that are, uh, TRS eligible, uh, the OBL, the OBLs are reported by the date that it's approved by the board. And so the, the, the amount is fifteen hundred dollars or two point five percent of pay up to sixty thousand. Sixty thousand, how, how it come up on that? That's the average teacher paid for our, for our, for our district. So all of the teachers, okay, will be getting fifteen hundred dollars. And so all of the other employees that aren't on the teachers, you know, it's gonna, it's gonna be two point five percent of their pay up to sixty thousand. So all employees that are making more than sixty thousand will get the same amount as the teachers. They'll get fifteen hundred, okay? The total cost of that, uh, will be four point million dollars. Employees must be on staff at the day of the payout, before that, if not, then they won't get it. Uh, and it will be part of the, the revenue. Okay. There, you know, has, there has to be a resolution for that, and that will be the board acting item, uh, in August twenty. I'll show you all the other items that we're expecting to bring in March twenty. So these are sort of the, the large budget additions. So, uh, the, the four point six million, I heard, uh, approved compensation increases, and have the staff additions. Now, we're talking about the community, I'm, 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 that was actually fifty fifty-two, we have the, you know, we're, it's two point five million. I don't know, if you have to see more orders than that, I'll, I'll add it, that's a, that's a problem, so agree my part. In order, you mean, the Spanish, the Latin, the Latin, the CCR, and those kinds of things. Most, most of those ones to that, and then the ones that use the staff addition, that, that's not a lot. Uh, the retention stuff, it's a four point one quarter. Uh, the other ADA system, we're, we're investing in through by the way, we're, 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 it's, it's, it's also, that I probably expect that is involved. Uh, our property children, you know, we're, we're getting, we spoke about that earlier, uh, half a moon going up. Uh, we do, we're, we're behind on our customer group, and, uh, so we're expecting to have to pay more to the cities for our, for our charter, the mutual hospital, and as a district project. And so, and there's also one other, one other staff addition, uh, you know, in the budget. So anyway, and I actually forgot, I mentioned, first thing I did, first thing I wondered when I came up here, was introduce my team. So I'm gonna take a little bit of a break and do that, because these guys have killed themselves the past three years. I'm not gonna be putting them into this in front of the page. So, so I'm gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna, and they're gonna join us from a widely asked. And so they actually they just say, I I we we just did the. And so Amber, Amber. How did I see? The song, the saying, the saying. So Amber is one of our tax. Amber lives in in here for farmers grant. She was last at uh she was last at Allen. And working working there in their finance team. She is our budget director. So then also, we have Giselle Rivera Franco. She was at Cedarville I S D. And uh she's uh she's been fantastic. She's our assistant director of budget. Became a couple weeks after I was doing this break because I really needed her help because she's really good with the assistant with team. And so I one thing I'll tell you about all these ladies, they they did work really good collaboratively. And doing a lot to to help all of the other departments, you know, with their with their budgets. And then I'll also say, I fully expect it'll be a failure in my part, all three of you. They'll end up being CFOs at some point or another. Because they clearly all have potential for that. Expecting that someday, not tomorrow, maybe later. But but I'm definitely expecting that someday. So anyway, let's just keep. Okay. All right, ladies. Okay, so we spent a little bit of time talking about pit codes. So what are what are those? Those are the program intent codes. That's part of our account structure. So if we have expenses that are raised, especially at, for example. We have to book those expenses. Oh, twenty three, that's that's one of the that's one of the pit codes. All of those other sub populations that we've mentioned have their own pit code. Okay. I can say what they are, but that would be more than two thousand and one. But they all have spending requirements. And so there were there were there were new pit codes and new requirements that were put on as part of hospital three. And some of that was figured out after the budget was done. So actually, you know, some of our some of our budgets weren't as high as what was required to spend. So we're we're gonna have some to some makeup work to do. One thing that we are gonna work on doing from a finance perspective is really look hard at all of our expenditures in nineteen twenty. Make sure that there are things that that uh that could have been booked. Early education, for example, which I think is really best. That we're making sure that that is getting booked to. If we can't figure that out, we may need to spend additional. And we're gonna we're gonna reserve some money from 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 the fund out to be able to do that. But uh but it is clear in hospital three, there are spending requirements that we do have to meet. There's a three year average that we're headed on 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 many of the others because of the three year average. But the new ones, we're we're not. We are buying because they are, we were bringing, especially early education and this next year. So uh so we're gonna be working on that. We'll we'll tell you those uh in a future in a future report. Okay, so this is how our budget shakes out on a percent basis. This is the object code view. Remember when I was talking to you about the the budget last time? What the board does is the budget on a function level basis, based on function codes. Function codes is what we're spending the money for. That's what we're spending the money for. This is what we're spending the money on. Payroll, contract services, supplies, whatever. So you can see how these shake out. This is without recapture. Okay, this is without recapture. Capture not. But uh so take recapture out. Eighty one point one percent of our budget is payroll, you expect. People business. And then we're got eight point five percent of contract services and you see the non service supplies of our operating. So all of our expenses, I expect, are in our staff. Next time you see the the pie chart, it will be on a function code basis. Because that's how that's how the the budget's supposed to be. So here's another view of things, you know, kind of on an object code basis. But if you add in recapture. And so that recapture is the gold piece there. That's eight point nine for our total budget. So it's a lot. You have the amount for utilities, two point three percent. We also have, you know, point four percent that goes to appraisal districts. So we have to pay that choice there. Point nine percent is payroll. So the the outside of staff, the discretionary part of the budget is fourteen point five percent. Less than fifty percent is what goes to, you know, the campuses for supplies and apartments and all those kinds of things. So this is just kind of a different way to to slice out how, you know, how the budget works. I mentioned on the call the other day, we created a this was a board board meeting the other day. Um on the for that technology purpose. We've created a new fund called the Technology Internal Service Fund. And we all know, especially in this remote world, we're living in the success of our how well we. Greatly correlates to our success of the district. And so we completely have some significant uh investment here. Having things in internal service fund helps us with the financial plan. Because there's many things that the board has to come out of this fund. And if it was out of the general fund, we can have these big budgets in the general fund, but we receive things by officer first. This having having a fund like this outside of the general fund enables us to worry about when it's received. Received in August, received in September, it doesn't matter from from a budget perspective. But we did make an initial transfer out from the general fund uh to the tech technology internal service. And we were expecting additional transfer at the end of the year, basically balancing out. This is one of the mechanisms, frankly, that we already did try to uh shelter our fund out. Okay. But it's it's numbers that are dedicated to. And that'll that'll help us uh with the long term fresh plan that we have. You'd have a plan for for after freshing. And that's it, that's the purpose of this fund, without relying on. Okay, so what do all the numbers look like? So this is this is what we're looking at now. So we ended twenty eighteen with a surplus of five point eight million with four point three months of fund. So the budget that's in place right now is actually for a small deficit, two point five million. You see how that uh kicks out in comparison. Uh but right now, so we're forecasting nineteen twenty to have surplus. But you can see large increase there and transfers out. Okay, so what's made up of that number? The district had already budgeted nine million to transfer out. That was one million to that insurance fund that I brought up a little while ago. One million for that, eight million went for the turf fields, okay? And we put already ten million into the new technology. I think we we may have as much as seven million more that we can potentially put into that fund to to basically break even on the general fund basis. So that's how that's shaping up there. But you can see in the proposed budget, how we're, you know, looking at the potential transfer out at the end of seven. You see total revenue, three oh seven, totally to put that transfer out of three oh seven. Okay. All right, so I'm gonna check. Because I I think this may be the first time we've seen this this slide. But this is student nutrition. This is how our student nutrition fund works out. Uh they had a small loss in eighteen nineteen. Uh they adopted a the board adopted a budget of a deficit in nineteen twenty mainly to reduce that fund balance amount. For child nutrition, by by statute, TDA, Texas Park of Agriculture, not TDA, we do agriculture. Uh we need to be below the three million. And so we did uh adopt the deficit. Took a little different home that open was gonna come around and that was gonna greatly impact the revenue. Look at the local revenue drop. Uh you know, it did. Be over seven hundred thousand meals, but that wasn't as many as we would have if school had been. That had been going on the whole time. So anyway, and also during that time, though, we still committed to paying our staff. So that's why we do have a larger deficit for nineteen twenty. Uh the the budget, though, that will happen twenty twenty one is uh we're expecting for. Okay, so we're gonna go debt service. Because we're asking you to approve a debt service budget to use. So I didn't tell you that at the house. I was surprised when we asked you to approve the budget. So our existing debt right now is ninety eight point eight million. All of those bonds that are still in place, the original number of bond was greater than forty three million. So uh for district our size, that is a low debt. It is, trust me. But uh it seems like a lot of money, it is a lot of money. But uh when you look at our our debt service, you can see how that how that kicks out. We do have a lot of flexibility with a large amount recallable within ten years. And that does help us with how we can structure debt. But uh within five years, fifty percent of that's going to be fine. You have to retire that in five years. All of it, of course, will be paid by uh within twenty. So this is how it looks graphically. So the the blue is principal, the red is interest. And so next time I show you this, I'm I'm gonna I'll put in what the uh kind of a bar for tax collections and what that's pretending. So you can see that. But uh anyway, so this actually shows in the map. I know the numbers are small, but with your hand, I hope you can see the map. But uh for anyone, this is how it shakes out. This debt profile uh would be the enemy of most districts that I want to prove. Uh so so anyway, we're we're gonna have no problem staying within the twenty pages. No problem at all. Structure our debt, our our big debt into those other white spaces. The the collections that we have for twenty twenty. So we have unissued two hundred and thirty four million. That's unissued out of the authorization for the twenty eighteen. We did issue hundred sixteen last year. And so uh the the original finance had us issued more than one in twenty twenty one. Uh so that was the original plan. So the way I look at things, the timing of the next bond really can be paid on cash flow. Okay. I mean, there's a lot of projects that. And there's a lot of ones we've done. And it's our job to to make sure that it's funded and placed for. But uh but what we wanted to do, though, is try to put off issuing new debt as long as possible. Because as soon as we issue debt, we have to start paying that debt. And when we have money just sitting in the bank, we're getting very little on that. We're getting point two, point two five percent in terms of interest. But we're paying, we're paying on the debt side of four percent or five percent or whatever else. So you want to issue, you want to wait as long as possible to issue debt. One thing that we've done, some of our other districts, we've had a general fund reimbursement resolution. Where we actually borrowed money from the general fund to fund the bond problems. Because that general fund is also earning point two five percent or whatever else. So I would rather I would rather use that money instead of paying out debt services of over three percent. So that's something that that we'll bring in the future, that's something that's warranted. Uh but uh our goal, though, is is to still stay under the twenty pages rather than the ratio of the one. So this is how things shake out on the debt service fund. Uh so you can see there, bringing it bringing our monthly fund balance, our months of fund balance closer to uh three months. Uh we're gonna put any out, we're gonna debase about three point eight million more in uh in debt, pay that off early. Uh so that's why we're looking at a small deficit. But again, if if the collections end up being higher, which I could easily see happening, I think three point one percent is pretty conservative. Uh I could see us having a surplus on the debt side of it. So there's our current budget. This is what we're looking at from a from a debt. Okay, so wrapping up. Um as I mentioned, we may need to use fund balance to to meet those state spending requirements for those for those pit codes. And so uh we talked about that in a future meeting when we're when we're gonna talk about fund balance designations and assignments and commitments. Um we have the uh the former grant that's set to expire after twenty twenty four. That's a major cause for concern. We do need to be speaking about that. Probably later, if you're to have, you know, if one of them, then one of you. That's something that I intended to spend part of the time to talk to you about uh in this next session. Um the uh the revenue picture is bleeding for the state. It's great to see that July number, but that contains something. Probably static. But uh it um the local collections aren't gonna be impacted. That will impact our debt service more than our than our general. And then, you know, tell me about that three point eight million on the debt service side. So that's required for us to be able to maintain that twenty twenty rate. So this is what we're gonna bring to our special item. It's it's gonna be the finance meeting. So it's a public hearing for the for the budget adoption. Uh we'll have the resolution for the supplement. Uh then we're gonna talk about fund balance designations. One of the one of the new ones that you'll see in there is that we want to remove one month of our fund balance into something called a state stabilization. Where it's something that we can we can set aside that we can use if we do have, if we need to, but we won't use it. But if we do have a big decrease in state funding, it's something that can cover that amount. But it would also allow us to shelter that on a sign. So we'll see how that looks in in one of the uh tables that we'll show you next time. We will ask you to approve the final budget that I presented for. Budget adoption for twenty twenty one. We as a because we are in recapture, there's a ten item. Bring you in terms of how we go about purchasing tenants credits. So it's an item. See what's you're confusing, but we'll try to explain it so at that time. We'll be asking you to set the tax rate. And then we'll also be showing you the latest uh financial investment report. Uh because this is gonna be kind of a financial, there's two, there's two investment options that I want to add to our investment policy. Uh that I'll tell you more about it. There's some other uh pools out there that are earning more than what we're earning. I'm trying to get every dollar. I'll show you that. And then there'll be uh some of the COVID related purposes, our guest providers, designers, you can see what else by that time, so. You have to take any.
I remember, are there any questions? Please be seated over there on this corner.
Yeah, and I apologize for the length and and all, but because we got the budget for two weeks. I mean, put it front of you, you can think about it during that time. You need to, you need to see me after class another day. You know, we could, we could definitely, uh we have to talk about any of these things. I want you to understand this.
We appreciate the timing and the presentation. And I think we recognize that where we are going to be in a couple of weeks. And we appreciate the new staff that is here and you will pull the tool back on us on August twenty.
Thank you very much.
Next agenda. Five D construction, I think, Mr. Moller.
We can spend five hundred and fifty four. Dr. Kevin, thank you for the opportunity to talk to us. He knows all about the finance, let's see what that money's buying. Quick overview of the summer of twenty twenty. New disruptions, um couple of changing environments that the teams persevered. We've given out the number of projects, managing multi purpose on final matchup. High school turf, we've had one thousand seven, one thousand, uh hundred and seventy thousand grasses. Three hundred fifty six thousand square foot. Our push up at those projects completed the first one, the eighth of the farm project. And the budget was on schedule. Part of that twenty eighteen farm project, you know, the ugly one, because it's all the stuff down the sea. I would space in front of foot, it's two hundred, three hundred and twenty five thousand square foot roof. Gone down to the summer, it was three hundred and thirty six new H B C units. On that contract with Texas Air payoff, so fantastic work done in there. Additionally, I'd like to welcome my newest team member, Billy O'Gierha. During, sorry. And has joined us as the director of paneling and construction. Worked from LPA, he already started working on the Florida project and uh speaking to eighty this afternoon, he's a new person on the client side. He'll pitch with power and art. Uh however, that goes back a little further. Billy actually worked upon the addition at the corner back in the day in the fleet, he would manage the use. Hiding in the background with a team of our projects, uh the licensed architecture of Texas, two thousand and nine, bringing in some licensed experience. Plus a passion for education, he's very excited man. I mean, there's some pictures and updates. This is multi purpose building, it's the exterior side that the landscape is going in, it's fantastic. All of that are ready when it's safe for us to queue client, starts a host of A S D. Uh with all the landscape is going in. Uh you can see those roof dividers with the delay, those manufactured out northeast and then it's ready for the purpose of the project. Uh you can see those going in, those asphalt that's dropped down to the ceiling. Uh to divide it, it's a pretty small section. Technology, the schools, etc. will be gone in. Overall, the structure side of the house, I don't have the M P M at this point, because we started to change up all the new servers, new power systems. Upgraded cameras, updated access controls. We made the rule that decision to uh integrate us cameras as well. Now that brings us live full ownership, all all the information, our reader tags, we can see what the camera is doing and the devices. We start there, we have an understanding of how things are being built. All of that now starts to roll, as well as some furniture, the technology parts. Over athletic projects, uh we're wrapping up there, eighty percent of four point four field self complete. So we're continuing to work on the softball baseball, it's pretty near a ranking. Running a turner, you can see they can feel gone in, the additional services to work it at their long distance. Down and full ultimate. Over at Smith, we can see that fourth, their far side of the track uh was collapsing on the carpet line there. That was continually built to the power, it was working in the original scope. But we had some savings after the third one, we took the opportunity to conserve at the same time. Uh and please that's how it's wrapped. Over a briefing, I had to put a note here, this is not a red rim, this is a drumstick foot, it's shallow, that that hill. Uh I was hoping somebody might be running across it, just to prove it's not a red rim. Absolutely fantastic work that has been done there. And I choose to wrap up with this for you as well. We're getting pretty familiar with the process, they're done all the team at the softball and baseball fields, they've drawn up their rain. Now they're laying that rock, maybe they use the lazy guy that didn't notice it, bring that absolutely appropriate. Uh once they get that in, they will finish up the features of the of the ranching, the first part. Now we'll wrap up that part. That part of experience. As the rest of the also kept up, running very well. We've completed the majority of the work for schools as far as what we see. But now we're securing access and stuff that they can, you know, a lot of the cameras, access controls, uh no type. Over at New Smith, you can see the new store fund and transaction counter. And then the image shows that transaction counter open, that's a custom cut. Uh who's a vast, they've got a big lens of of the time screen from back at that action counter. Who have it last month, uh that poses so that hopefully that that's a clear way to check IDs before folks get into the building. Similar situation over a briefing, folks come up to the transaction, we go to get a copy of their ID, nobody they are. Once they clear the rap system, then we're out of there. Back here, finally back. So this is part of creating the font, we're working part of the fact that we're part of the font. Looking at our farm projects, as far as talking about the dollars, this is the the similar layout of the series one. Both construction now, and we're going through, careful through the final project there, we're going to all. Where the defense design, we can create markets with the series two. And we want to start construction for series two in May, one one. We do have that bag that coordinates our tax rate with ourselves, the quantity. We're coordinating our passioners to see how we might prepare capital, so that we can get some of the services in series pretty soon as possible. But that does extend us into the point two, uh studio. And uh series one, the quarter is complete, we have a good enough work. I will say that we may have taken on a little too much this summer and had a couple of unforeseen consequences. One of them is we typically have sixty, seventy, seventy people at the gate. Lots of cleaners, furniture, those painters, finishing, that concept. Honestly, that's all possible. So what we normally think is our final rush to the finish line, Austin, to provide and to warm this, to save the money. While our ones will be fantastic, working with us, coordinating each each. We're just all working around each other slowly, looking forward to the over seventy. This takes a big look at the new uh cafeteria floor. Again, remember that wasn't part of our our first move, we both did, we were paperful, so we're able to add this skirt to the project in the ultimate. Looking at some of the items that are ready to be part of internal protection. We can do these two way display cases, so we make a space that folks are gonna be using in the library. And let it now display that work, absolutely, absolutely, the uh the school group. So you can see that cap uh that display case is being both on the cafeteria side and on the library side. And just a quick before and after, remember what the library looked like and where we're going. And I'll be honest, the form of the monitoring and justice, I was over there this afternoon, and I'll be sure it's got a video update for this. It is absolutely phenomenal. It is absolutely phenomenal. Our partners at LPA have done it. And we had the time, part of the design team, so I go to some credit there, uh, did an absolutely beautiful job of giving us that presentation modern, after being a fool and still remembering that it's never. They struck that balance and maybe seem to like it, so I'm really proud of it. The other one is I want to give a quick shout out to Bobby Shaw. Uh, he is single-handedly responsible for the success of the 28th comp at the moment. We have a lot going on and he stays focused on that. I'm contacted by my professor, without him by my side, he would be in a very dire situation. So a big shout out to Bobby, uh, who not only went to CFP, he graduated from CFP, uh, first come on and now is changing after so many years there. Pretty good with the hallways. Another quick shout out is to our councilwoman, um, um, from Mendelson, sorry, district hall representatives. We know our father especially these programs, we send the gags. These programs have to be every ten years, you're going to do the test portion. So we have to pay, there are paid works, go down, pile it up. Every ten years we pay them again and again, you know. While Karen saw the wisdom in seeing that we're both quite practicing as team, we're going to give it to her. So inmates are voting, she pulled our item. Uh, in the narrative, uh, very fast, because it should have been a consent item. He says, I'm putting this in, I'm not putting it to you, I want to clean the other. And in her words, there shouldn't be a patient in my life. So in big thank you to Karen, step forward, she could have just said it in her mind, another item is not going on, but she stepped forward, moved the item and gave us that. So unless we change something, we'll keep out, but then we will come on after the thing, uh, and that probably. Who, Ruby Ford, Ruby and Fields, over the other way in the construction, I. The work on the roof, again, I think members of those who uh, it's a little bit different as well as the AC unit updates. Takes four units this summer. We originally had a plan to do a whole spray, we actually said, well, this is a taxi, I have to. So we took on the challenge and then we placed forty units that are high priority renovation done. Leaving that through the iteration, we've got the screen, we've been exposed, basically outside of. So new control, new units, and you can see that for twenty uh, twenty years, it takes us some, those three units on the left versus our main uh, high energy equipment and units on the right. Inside the school, they are going to town. Uh, we are completely set up. As the school's brother, we've had different additions, they uh, they're different formula, different areas, not becoming a challenge. That's why the problem with the management. Well, rather than trying and white for them, we decided to do whole hog add it. The women have the interior, the engraving, the building, the structure that this area here will be, we need to have a complete classroom of iteration that needs and second, second. During our adventure of the demolition, we got to find some fun secrets, an old window that used to be an exterior of the wall, some whiteboard, six will have jobs on, door markings on. I still look at Bobby's name, last thought, we never found that hat. As we know, all that disruption comes with this. So we, we have in five portable buildings, a couple of sites that mix up the two spaces. Over here on the right hand side are the contact, and when you come to bathrooms, over here with the three, three places. Uh, those that have bathrooms that are similar to other classrooms inside of the building. We put through the access control of both these exterior doors that you can park in and out, and nobody needs to pop door, go to anything like that. Uh, so basically your, your whole path becomes an access point. Uh, we also put in a prominent effect, and you can see right from the corner of the building all the way around, I would pretend prominent effect. So this will be almost a courtyard with the floor. Uh, additionally, we've completely separated the construction entrance, so there was absolutely no overlap between this area, the construction entrance at the back. And then took a little longer, we did a little more work, but then we worked the round side of the door, that we can possibly do the back of the door. Up to the dedicated construction entrance, which again, we put up some people to separate those areas for the school. Jackson Construction will have a complete whole uh, construction entrance, or we'll need another, something like that, we could not be anything, uh, shared anything. The other thing that happened was, I asked, oh, I see we leave the contractor, we shared that we're doing sixth grade tech pickup. And the construction team would get out, celebrating the sixth graders coming to get their items. So Jackson's family, they're going to uh, having bottles put together, Jackson Construction, they're giving, telling bottles back from the other side. We'll also be doing a program with some red ring, what they can expect when they come back. Believe me, the components for building to get their technology, we probably can share something with them and celebrate the construction with our sixth graders. Will be those seven, first seven graders coming into that new classroom and a great. Over at Turner High School, you've got drivers, all of it ready, uh, ready to be opened. We focus on that front entry, freshened head and ionated one half of the school purse. However, Jackson Construction still went out for those units. Not a lot of people have already helped us with our energy centers, we've been doing high efficiency units up there, but we've got to be high cameras. The world of front entrance is through the renovation components, those new units are going to help the entire school. This is a little wiped out, but you can see how much we've been working out. The guys laid fifteen thousand, then they put a gas tank inside. All the hard work is going to be really more piped up some more. Quick look at some of those new units coming out. In the interior, very similar renovation, just like the other high schools. Like I said, they're a little bit behind, but remember the construction, the heavy lifting is done now, it's just finished. Then we'll be ready for the seventh, that's started under a hundred eighty units last week there. I know that double in a long time. Quick look forward, like I said, that red block, we're going to be figuring out work. Over at B and C, we'll be focusing on D and F, these collaboration spaces that look back into the foreground. Wrap up the late summer, early fall, we'll be beginning to order shop other products, very challenging, instructions to figure out. How can we do more partial time while we're working in shops, we're split the shop, so that definitely the top order shop will be renovated. We'll just be working alongside our folks to get that, get that work out to the fore. Be ready for the summer of next year, which will be the two green blocks, it's looking at O, which is the existing K R T C and M, which is eventually more. Uh, then we spoke about that, the lines and pipe. Not as many virtual updates there, log on the planning side, I'll be working very closely with city of Dallas, meeting all the current requirements and requirements. I will say that for the positive things I said before, we are struggling, um, they are struggling. We're having technical issues, well, they say that all the links to the wrong meetings, they have the microphone issues, other challenges, this is the other thing. Uh, we have been pushed parts of opportunities, meaning, but that feels a little specific. We are looking to give them a place to respond to times where we can go back. We're bringing everything that I powered on the side like now, good front side, exit construction has a terminal out there and we're doing everything that doesn't trigger a demo point. This connected our utilities, we did out anything with value, uh, and so as soon as that kind of drops, you see that everything coming out, and we start to have the introduction to be there. Part of our zoning departments used to have a meeting, this will be almost eleven, virtually. Um, we did the new requirements, we said about post parts, we were neighbors, and we do a last, uh, parents square. To invite everybody to pick up date and open the door. Series two, calls people hate. Perry and Smith are the two big projects, our folks in the head of the board was presentation. The elementary, as we said before, kind of positive, some of those challenges, what communication can exist and how do we align the new sector standard in the 22nd century. We'll see that the design is going to want to leave the rates for next year. Thank you, we have four similar challenges, one of the four upgrades, what can we go with that? So also just the, a capacity issue, we have Turner and Field under construction, we have variance from the interconstruction. I want to be realistic with expectations on how much we can do. We did a plan series two over the two years construction period, so we can use two summers with the elevator and for the station. Um, so we're just adding out those items out now at the beginning. So Perry, we're starting to build the traffic study, we know the traffic circulation around that site is challenging, there's also the practice challenge. Part of the instructions is to not have the Mario podcast, but have a simple little small back. This one's a little strange, um, the L K is having some challenges, getting the layout just right, um, as well as being those circulation. And then the site plan, there's lots of in here and lots of studying to be reviewed, so that the clients are actual. Um, inside the writing, this is all the program we take out of the middle, middle school, and I'm right to start with just having to some of the studies. One of the disciplines is what can be, happen, experience, start meeting the campus, set that concession, leave it up to me to say. This is what we're paper world, what makes sense. We need to have a dispersed administration, we have sixth grade admin, et cetera. Neither houses need to go in reference to the way that is the library this first, the library second. Centralized, neither avenue, but centralized, either possible. But all pretty good opportunities, we still need to get a little bit of a variation of that. Now we know what we're paying for, we take our ideas for, uh, through December, then it's, it's starting to be something. Even Smith, we're doing something similar. We focus our resources there on the CCD area and the new street entry, as well as the part of the library. Over on the street entry, we all believe in the U K, that we had wide open door theme, that was. The majority of our students are coming that way. There were people who said we had a relationship with that. Voice of this, an artificial field, and creating an infection that leads the school uh, down towards the field. So that we start to have that five and that relationship, an artificial field and the school activities. That creates a new street of entry, like I said, kind of those four back to the new front entry. Creates a new CCD innovative hallway, widens, and then we create these CCD hubs for construction, um, and other programs. As it beats out to the library, we're just renovating the concept. Uh, secure rooms for the important materials, but creates that open stair, door stair, and lots of tall rooms that could be diving into the details of that. That's pretty important, what we usually enter the footpath. Some of the CCD hubs and that library space. And that was our summer of 2020.
Board members, do you have any questions? Is Perry?
Question about the softball baseball. And I don't think I saw Smith here for a while.
We'll bring an update to the board, September board. Great.
Mr. Robert.
Um, mentioned your team, but don't discredit your effort, contribution on all of this, because I know it's a lot. So, uh, in the series two, uh, the other, the series two presentation, what kind of carries over that? What is, what's happening with standard, and one of the documents said not at Orient. Can, can you clarify?
Yes, so much like we've done with a lot of our projects, uh, we, we got a boss, but that in. Just like we did it for the website, I'm not sure if it's before, so we understand the purpose and vision of the event. The reality is, we need to be needing to make it open to the network. The structural analysis on the P G is how that is standing for what we need to dance and get through. And they're going to come back and say, okay, this is a pretty divisionary, this is what's going to be, and they need to get in that kind of. So there's a funnel, uh, language to describe the products taken and that important.
We don't know.
We've got to work through what that looks like.
Okay, and then, uh, are, and I know everything with, with problems and ways and plans. But is the board going to get an update or a presentation from the bond advisory committee? I, I mean, in the chart, not the chart, but in the description of that committee, it said update for. I know we've been kind of.
No, we're still on, we're still on track.
I mean, is that committee going to present to the board? Are we going to hear from, from that bond, I'm sorry, bond advisory committee?
Yes, so.
Did I say it wrong? I'm sorry.
No, 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 that's true. And, and yes, and so we are, and so Dr. Asbury is working with that through the bond advisory committee.
Okay.
And B C, and so she's trying to get those two to meet September something week. Oh, it's November now. Yeah. Experience.
Okay.
I have a question about the contractor Jackson, I'm just curious how they're doing, I've seen them work elsewhere in the D F F, you know, to parts. I'm wondering, they're new to CFP, are they fulfilling your expectations?
And, and they have done absolutely phenomenal. They have faced a lot of the same challenges. Not sure if it's the regulation and the contradictions, folks will be other regulations. So Jackson is in the industry, it's all take at least once a week, it's breaking me. Um, so that's phenomenal, we can book the owner of the company, not talk to, put it down, the closing party decision. They've done wonderfully.
Um, another question is, this answer question is, when you talk about Perry, I can't help but notice all the people that use the track for exercise. And I hope that whatever impact we have on people I see out there with strollers and just walking for their health, that you minimize the length of time. But that is close off, if possible. Mr. Moore?
I've got a question about that.
The technology change, is it ever?
Yes.
It's coming a long way, um, when they give the construction part's done, now it's the occupied part. That's why they're going to start one bit, because now it's, my job's kind of left, and his job's kicking off. So he's got a good head plug system online, he's got a little bit of coverage online. He did take a little time to study quite furniture, but that won't be more than a buck. Uh, so the book, they're pretty moving in.
Has the transition from old technology building in front of range to all the wiring and serving happen?
In progress, I'll tell this.
That, that sounds critical. Board members, any other question? Thank you, Mr. Moore, and you think about that. The next item is item five seed legislative action, Sabatik, who's going to talk to us about that.
Yes, that's me. Uh, if y'all remember, I didn't, we have a Texas special school board. And I stood up to be drafted to the Legislative Action Committee. Um, this is, that was the start of the grassroots effort in preparing for the delegates coming up at the Tascatazmi Conference. And then in preparation for our legislative year next year, so I'll tell you all what we've done. Um, in that time, just so y'all are aware, uh, the normal schedule would have been, we would have met, uh, at a central location in April. Entire Legislative Action Committee from all the different regions and would have gone through and developed priorities. Then we would have met again at S L Y and started tweaking those priorities and then electing our representatives to the committee. They could take those four, finalize them, and take those four and work with the task before. We couldn't do a lot of those meetings, so we had, we did a Zoom. Uh, in April, Region Ten went ahead and met ourselves and started putting together our priorities, uh, and our interests and focus. So that we would be prepared for that meeting with all the regions. So, um, we did that, and then in June, when we took met at S L Y, we had another Zoom meeting. And all of the region Legislative Action Committee members took worried and the priorities from all the other regions. We kind of put them together, spent lots of time on the word be and and, and moving it around and seeing what it was. So I just wanted to, I'll give you, um, just the ten identified priorities, so not final, there's no information in there. Because they go to the final committee for tweeting. You can understand that a lot of, you know, our priorities in April were very different than what our priorities or focus or concerns might be right now. So, um, these are no priority order, just to mention, but funding of school finance system and or maintenance or increase of state share. Mental health resources for students, additional resources for school security and student safety. School district advocacy, opposition to vouchers, staff recruitment engine, reduced testing, the Tahiti testing. Uh, charter transparency slash limity, the expansion of charters. Disaster response that really came up, uh, carryover from Hurricane Harvey when we were here with the COVID. And then promotion of cultural awareness to person. So there are various tech priorities that the that committee that we selected will be taking and finalizing those. And then we're the task board for complete development of the uh priorities for presentation to the delegates. A certain way of the test. But I just wanted to make sure y'all were aware of what I did.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Vacher. Um guys, just an item for discussion today. I mean, I just would like to thank you for the time you've spent helping advocate for student satisfaction. That brings us to item number six. Items for discussion and or action for six A, item to move from the ten. So we have two items to move from the ten. We have four C and then four D. So uh remember once you go first. Vacher?
Uh. This is the C M A R uh item. Yeah. Um. So I just have some questions um on this. And that's what I wanted to add to the presentation because I wanted to hear um exactly what you provided on the series two. Um related to the stadium and this does not at the morning, so you took care of you took care of that. And then on our middle school renovations um on that. And when we approve or if we approve this C M A R, um they're going to they're going to bid on certain criteria, which we're delegating to all to find out. But then the next step would be that project and the G M P will come back to us for our approval, correct? Okay, so all this is committing us to is bidding, just developing, choosing the delivery method and the bid, right? Okay, and the reason I, just so y'all know what I'm I'm asking about is when we go back to our um. Yeah, um our demographic study that we did. I mean, we all know we have decline in whole school enrollment. And now we're losing this year, I think, as a kind of a normal year of involvement to know where we are. And the fact that we have a lot of middle school capacity, but also some of our plans for development or innovation or ideas. Those are off hold too. So I find myself struggling with just the timing of everything that's happened. So I need to make sure that this is just the commitment to the delivery method and bidding it based on a certain criteria. And that's where it is. And maybe we're going to be in a better position at that time to evaluate our middle school enrollment, our programs that we're going to look at and what we can fit there. Am I true or false?
We got to be here.
Yes, well, really, I have a question. Yeah, but it was true. And that's what um and then also, and and why I asked about the bond advisory committee is that, you know, moving in and taking these significant steps into series two. You know, I want to hear from those, how many was it six?
And and I want to clarify, I was just told that they are impossible to provide. They're not going to break before, but just whether they're going to provide a report or a document.
That was the last discussion because I thought it was the competitive because they're providing the same information at the presentation.
Well, then I guess, you know, my expectation of that committee then maybe a little different was, you know, I wanted, you know, a report on y'all, you know, how is the process going? What is happening? Are we meeting what our voters, um you know, elected to do by voting for the bond? How is the process, is it working, you know, what's happening? So we were in the middle of nearing the end on series one or close to the end. But nearing the end of series one, moving into a significant investment again for series two. And I guess I want that committee feedback. You know, our it's the will of the voters that voted for the bond. Is it being met? Have we duly done that? That's what I that's what I want to hear.
Be a deeper conversation.
Well, then what was the purpose? So why do we have that bond advisory committee? Are they providing feedback on the projects that comes with them or what what is? I mean, on the website, our our website, it says that provide for to admin the board.
Um so we need to focus on what's on the agenda and that can be the discussion for others.
Right, that's I'm still that, I mean, that's where I am on moving into series two. We haven't heard.
Yeah.
So as long as this is only committing us to the delivery method and that price, that's it.
All of it. Then who's left?
I know, but this is especially with these middle schools on here, these are big steps in lots of months.
May I ask you some clarifying question on that? This is what you're saying is that we're not committing to the specifics of the product. Okay, make sure I understand. So we have a motion on this, board. Mr. Shackman?
With the clarifications that we've gotten, I would move that we approve agenda consent agenda, item four D.
Now a motion by Mr. Shackman? And a second by Mr. Matthews. All those in favor of item four D? We have six in favor and opposed. I see none. Okay, so that brings us item four C, Mr. Wallace. Do you want to speak to that?
No, not really. In fact, I'm just going to speak.
Okay, um so Mr. Wallace has been abstaining since he has a motion for item four C. Is Derek? I immediately approve item four C, consider it's an acceptance of the purchasing report through May first, twenty twenty through June thirty. Thank you. You have a motion, Mr. Derek, you have a second? Mr. Shackman, improve second. Um is there any discussion? Um all those in favor? So we have five in favor and there any opposed? You're opposed and Mr. Wallace is opposed. So that brings us on to item six B. That was a few pages. Um consider approval of the CFP I C district and campus improvement plan. Thank you, Dr. Chapman.
Yeah, so you know, two years ago, we moved the the approval of the district and campus improvement plan from November to August. I felt very strongly that we need to have a plan in place before we moved in halfway through the year. The great thing that happened over the course of the nineteen twenty school year is that the the board, they approved, as you said, a little tile on the wall from our vision, vision, motto and belief. They took that piece and we developed a C B twenty thirty, so a ten year plan. Legislation met last year and they ended up needing to have house bill three goals. So we have C B twenty thirty, house bill three goals, and now district and and campus improvement plan. The great news is we did all this at one time. So there's a direct mirror of some of the things that you've already approved. District program, house filter ring and C B twenty thirty. So I just wanted to the the state that we don't have all these different plans. They're really all in the one plan, along with tenure plan, that obviously C B twenty thirty. But all of those are blended into one. So it's a it's a plan that you've already seen, same goals, same objectives, it's in a different category. Understand as we move forward, uh potentially in the next year with house bill three goals, remember all the percentages we have? Obviously, those may be unavoidable. We may have to find a new benchmark and have star testing in in twenty nineteen and the future or twenty twenty, excuse me. Or we may not have star testing in twenty twenty one. We'll see what legislation and or commissioner decides. Those percentages will be altered as we move forward, when we get back to the normal. But all three plans are mirror of each other, all of the same priorities and objectives as as we move forward.
Thank you, Dr. Chapman. Board members, um you're discussing our districts and campus improvement plan. I was kind of forgotten in the August, so I was a little like at the fifteen hundred ninety nine page agenda. Thank you, Cam. So um are there any, is there a motion?
Well, I'd be happy to make a motion, but a quick comment. Uh Dr. Chapman, I think your leadership in this area has been uh very effective. Uh I personally appreciate, I think, all my colleagues do as well. It was obvious in reading these, like I said, I read everywhere, every one, but in scanning them and reading them and reading the district plan, the thought process and the correlation of H V three and and the various pieces. Well, congratulations to all involved. It it felt to me like something more cohesive and it gave us, I think, personally at least, a sense of we can do this. And so I, you know, and with that, um, Ms. Klein, I would move that we accept the approval of the district and campus improvement plans and present.
Thank you. So we have a motion by Mr. Shackman, second by Mr. Derek. Um any discussion?
No.
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 Yeah. It was not a light, it was a pretty mild situation. And um so thank you, Dr. Chapman, and all your staff. That brings us to item number sixty, consideration and possible action on resolution of the authority to superintend the acting place for the study. Okay, ask Dr. Chapman, okay, we can that to be fair. If you do infer, okay. So we're going to have the sixty next, which is considerable matter related to endorsement of capacity for director nomination. Um I just ask to include this. Um we can or we cannot endorse it today. I know the only is the regular credit cargo from a seat that's been on the board previously. You guys can run again, there's other candidates. I'm just hoping for whatever board wants to do. Is there um any desire to move forward or recommending a particular individual to represent? And go forward or um if you're for.
Ms. Klein, I've been looking at, um, again, I wanted to share one comment that I heard when we were looking at the representatives for the rest of the action. Because I was approaching those candidates and who I was going to go for, kind of a broad range, you know, big districts, small districts. You know, we're not familiar with the struggles or the challenges of smaller districts and and that approach. Uh but a a differing opinion was presented to me that, you know, there's no change. That we expect the legislative session to continue dating all that more on public education. That might be a strong word, but attack, you know, a challenge for public education. So those folks that have that represent the district or that are from districts similar to ours or similar in size might be a better option for us, uh just because they're familiar and similar, you know, problems. So that that work is tasky for directors if they are involved in top of legislators or moving forward action or school items. Um that's a consideration.
Okay, so the board. Would the board like to endorse one of the candidates listed? Kevin Hurdle from a seat, he's been coming Stephanie O'Dell from McKinney, Doug Kendall from community, and Doug Strickland from White. Mr. Matthews? We have a motion by Mr. Matthews. Second by Mr. Derek, so all all those in favor? So I have the six in favor and opposed. There's no opposition. So that is item sixty. Our next item is a fun one. Um six E is considered designation of voting delegate and alternate delegates of the virtual Tascatazzi general conference. Um if there hasn't been enough verticals, this will be vertical two. We're whatever our reason is, we're getting at them. So we're looking, this is the recommendation of the superintendent of board fifty, provide a delegate and an alternate for the Tascatazzi general conference. Are there any board members that are um willing, hoping, would be willing to participate and dominate yourself? Mr. Vacher? So we do be willing to be the delegate, so then that would be, okay, I'm never delegate, Derek. Um we'd be willing to be the alternate. Is there anybody else that would like to serve? And I think honestly, a lot of this is probably anyone can monitor that wants to, in my way here.
Well, I don't know how, but I assume kind of in regular when they do have a desk area, there may be, they can sit. I mean.
So I believe, so we have paperwork here that was cast on, maybe for official delegates that we can pull on. And um so it's for the delegate, the alternate, whole district law. So um so with that, um I guess it's something like the make a, we need a motion. So we need a motion, Mr. Matthews? Did you turn your microphone on?
My question that we approve. There are Vaches, our delegate, and Stanley Derrick and Dylan.
So we have a motion, do we have a second? Mr. Shackman? Um all those in favor? Those six in favor and opposed, opposed. So we are done with item six E. Our last item, well. Other than how much of board members, it is item sixty. Um consideration possible, I kind of like we, that would be authority for the superintendent to acting place and board justice for modified operation. Um we have a board member question that requires a terming confirmation. So underneath. Texas government code five fifty one point oh seven one. Um the board is going to go into closed session now. I respect government code five fifty one point oh seven one for attorney confirmation. Item, and then we will come back out and vote on it as soon as we're done. And if anyone wants to hang around, you're welcome to hang around outside. We're going to ask those that are not involved in this discussion to be, um we'll take a break. It's ten oh one P M. We'll come back at ten oh six. And um with that, we'll. And, um, with that, we'll, I'm not a, I'm not a, I'm not a, I'm not a. I call, I promise me, and we're going to bring the board back to open session at ten fifty four P M, politics. And that's, we'll discuss, um, item sixty, direction and possible action on the work. Your motion would be made on item sixty. Mr. Shackman?
Ms. Klein, I'd like to make a motion, and prior to that, motion, the board would like to be on record as we discussed in our session on how extraordinary we believe Dr. Chapman and our administration and our service function during this emergency time, and, uh, express our appreciation of what they've done to facilitate continuing their service, to make it all work. I move that the board approve and adopt the resolution and action related to delegating a party to the Superintendent to act in place of the Board Trustees during modified operations in the twenty twenty one school year, or until the board acts to rescind this resolution and to further authorize the board, the board president and secretary to sign said resolution on behalf of the board.
Thank you, Frank. A motion by Mr. Shackman, and a second by Mr. Botch. And, um, any discussion? I would just note, I think that a lot of our staff have been working Saturday the week, um, tirelessly, hopefully, hopefully, taking care of themselves during this time that, I'm tired of the word unprecedented, but we've had been unprecedented. And, um, I think that this resolution gives Dr. Chapman the flexibility. He checks, I mean, he checks with us on most of everything he does, but they are emergency ordering. So we appreciate the opportunity to thank you for this school year for the action that we previously took in March with a slightly different wording. And so all those in favor? Yes, Kara, yeah. So we have six in favor, you opposed, and then opposed. But with that, um, thank you, Dr. Chapman. We appreciate you and all of that, and I hope someday you can have a day off. And, um, the summer that wasn't, my daughter and I are still prepared on what happened in April. We don't know where April went, but, um, so that brings us to agenda item seven, comments for board members regarding both agenda items. Are there any comments? No, hearing none, seeing none? We are there for and during at ten fifty six P M, like y'all see this August, I mean.